Now you want to go to the closed session link that I sent out yesterday, I can send it again.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll go to that one. Okay, bye.
Okay.
All right, welcome back everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the first study session of October twenty six, two thousand and twenty one. I'm going to read the usual announcement as required. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the City of Mountain View City Council Resolution Number one eight six zero three. In accordance with Assembly Bill three six one. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview dot legisstar dot com. On YouTube at mountainview dot G O V slash YouTube and on Comcast Channel twenty six. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period. By visiting mountainview dot G O V slash C C underscore speakers. To enter the Zoom meeting or by phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. And entering webinar ID eight one seven seven eight seven three three zero one eight. Any emails received by four thirty P M. Today were received directly by the City Council. So move on to item two, which is roll call. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abeyhoga. Councilmember Lieber.
Here.
Councilmember Matashek. Councilmember Shawalter. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Kamai.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so we'll move on to item three, which is our study session. Item three point one is the City Park and Los Alto School District Community School Sites Master Planning Update. The purpose of this study session is to provide council with an update on the current status and next steps for the future. Los Alto School District, School and City Park Site Master Planning. Including staff's preliminary recommendation for the city park location based on collaborative master plan work to date. The study session will also provide background on prior council actions. And agreements connected to the master planning and allow council to evaluate design considerations. Guiding current park city. Guiding current city park site master planning recommendations. And upcoming master planning of the joint use open space on the future. Uh, Los Altos School District School Site. After the staff presentation, the council will answer at two questions. Question one, does council support the staff recommended city park location? And question two, does council have any additional considerations for staff to fold into the next steps in the master planning process? Deputy Zoning Administrator Rebecca Shapiro represent the memo. Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Archie Shavastava. Los Alto School District Assistant Superintendent Randy Kenyon. And Architect for Los Alto School District Lisa Galfand are available for questions. We think we'll start with the staff presentation. So shall I turn it to you, Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, definitely. I'm just sharing my screen. Are you seeing the cover slide? Great. So thank you, Mayor Kamai. Good evening, Mayor Kamai and council members. Uh, as the introduction indicated, I'm Rebecca Shapiro, Deputy Zoning Administrator for the City of Mountain View. In our community development department, I'm here to present an update on the master planning work. For the City Park and Los Altos School District School Site in San Antonio Center. The overall L A S D property shown on the screen highlighted in a light purpley color. It's approximately eleven point seven acres of land in the northeast corner of San Antonio Center. The school district purchased the property from federal realty at the end of two thousand and nineteen. And for for reference, the property is bounded by California Street, which is on the right side of the graphic in front of you. Uh, showers drive is to the east, which is along the bottom. To the west is the S F P U C Hetch Hetchy right of way on the left side of the graphic. And at the very top, you'll see the main petty entry drive into San Antonio Center. As Mayor Kamai noted, the primary purpose of today's or tonight's study session is to gain initial council and community input on the staff recommended city park location. As well as overarching master plan design considerations that staff will continue to use to guide our collaborative work with L A S D. Uh, in the next steps of the master planning process. The study session also presented an opportunity for us to provide background information to the community and the current city council on prior council actions that have led us to where we are today. Before jumping into the meat of the master plan update, I'm just going to briefly touch on uh the key agreements between the city and L A S D, which have led us to this unique collaborative master planning process. And staff movement provides a great demo or additional background information. For these agreements which were negotiated and executed in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. But their key role in regards to the master planning process was starting with the um the L A S D T D R program M O U, which introduced the concept of this collaborative master planning process. Uh, specifically for the joint use open space, given the city's financial contributions towards its acquisition. The funding and joint use agreement for that joint use open space area further detailed. This master planning process and included minimum required facilities and a deadline for constructing a joint use open space. And then later on, when an opportunity arose for the city to purchase two acres of land from L A S D for a city park site. Uh, the property transfer agreement added scope to the master planning work to identify the city park as compared to the school site. Uh, so once L A S D completed purchase of the property, our respective staffs started touching base. Um, in early two thousand and twenty about kicking off the master plan effort. Um, and unfortunately, this happened just before uh the COVID nineteen shutdowns went into effect. And our respective um staff priorities and workloads shifted significantly. So um, we've experienced some delays in this work, but um have have made a lot of catch up progress and we're here tonight. Uh, as a check in on key topics that will allow this collaborative work to continue. So um, early and ongoing discussions have hashed out a basic process for our our master planning work, which involves um an iterative process of collaborative staff analysis. Followed by City Council and L A S D Board input for each of the master plan elements respectively. You'll see those on the screen. Um, the recommended city park location, as well as some of these key design considerations for this step of the master planning process were presented by L A S D staff to the L A S D Board last week. Uh, the L A S D Board broadly supported the recommended city park location and further collaborative master planning efforts. So after City Council input tonight, uh, city staff anticipates that continuing to work with the L A S D staff and consultants on master planning of the joint use open space. Followed by a presentation of our findings and recommendations to the City Council and L A S D Board respectively for input. And we anticipate doing so in a lockstep similar to what we've done in this first step of the master planning process. The overall staff identified design considerations are summarized here and described again in more detail in the staff memo. These criteria supported the work that we've done to identify the city park location. And uh, as I noted earlier, they will continue to be used for our subsequent work on the joint use open space. The most critical objective uh in from staff's perspective for the city park was to identify a site that would be neighborhood oriented. Public facing and centrally located to the area. Yeah, uh, the staff recommendation also takes into account the open space planning from the San Antonio precise plan, which sought to create a green spine along the petty way entry road into San Antonio Center. Leading to additional centralized and publicly accessible open space within San Antonio Center. And you'll see a graphic on the street uh screen that illustrates um the San Antonio precise plan principles. Um, basic strategies of of open space, um although the precise plan does allow some flexibility for um refinement of locations. Um, of those open space areas. The staff recommended city park site is located at the southeast corner of California Street in the Pettaway Entry Drive uh into San Antonio Center that corresponds to roughly the northwest corner of this this property. Staff has found that it it's the only spot on the L A S D property that's located along a public street. And predominantly facing an existing residential neighborhood area. The Pettaway also serves as a primary pedestrian connection to residential neighborhoods to the north. And California Street is a primary east west connector for the San Antonio neighborhood area. Within the San Antonio precise plan boundaries, the recommended location falls at roughly the midpoint of California Street. And it is also well situated for um a future school access road to be sited behind it. Um, to allow access from Pettaway Entry Drive, which is important for uh managing potential future conflicts between school operations like pickups and drop offs and uh public street frontages where uh multiple city plans are seeking to widen sidewalks and install separated and or protected bike lanes. So um i- in the future, the access road could also provide egress to city park parking if that ends up being a desirable quality for the park when we get to the park design stage. Um, a- and lastly, the location places open space along that entry drive into San Antonio Center. Um, it it similar to what was envisioned by the San Antonio precise plan. Uh, and and we believe that will provide at least a couple of different options for joint use open space configuration when we get to that stage of work. So all told, this spot was was found to meet basically all of the identified criteria that applied to this this question we asked ourselves. As I noted earlier, the the current master plan work really teed off the collaboration that the city and L A S D had over the T D R program. And while identifying the city park location is an important first step of the master planning process. There are still a number of steps and different processes uh ahead of us before uh the city park can be constructed or uh development of the school site can occur. And there will be several uh opportunities for decision makers and public uh input uh as those processes continue, both in the remaining steps of the master plan process and subsequent detailed design processes. Uh, as far as immediate next steps are concerned, staff anticipates returning to council for input on the joint use open space master planning before finalizing the master plan work with L A S D. And once completed, that will allow the property transfer process to continue as well as like site condemnation. And um eventually, the more detailed design sequel and permitting processes necessary to arrive at the final design and to start construction for both the city park and the L A S D school sites respectively. And that concludes staff's presentation. As as Mayor Kamai noted, we do have two questions for council input tonight. And I do have slides um available to prompt council discussion on each question as needed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Shapiro. So since this is a study session, um we'll turn it over to public comment um first. So um, does any member of the pu- would any member of the public on the line like to provide public comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star in on your phone. We'll display um a two minute timer on the screen. All right, Tim McKenzie.
Greetings all. And Tim McKenzie, he him pronouns, uh resident of the Montalomen neighborhood. Love the idea of a park. Looks great. Um, but just as a Montalomen, gotta speak up and make sure that when entering into this uh agreement with the school district, that the city keeps the park space open so that we don't years down the line have a sudden experience where fences going up unexpectedly. Um, with, so thank you. Look forward to seeing a park there. Eventually, it looks like a great spot.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you. Uh would anybody else like to provide public comment on this item? All right, I am not seeing any other hands, so I'll bring it back to um the council. Does any member of council have any um I guess we can start with questions first? We have any questions about the study session, um what was presented? All right, not seeing any. Um we can now move into deliberation. So if council members could um answer both question one and two, I'll do my best to to keep track. Councilmember Hicks.
So as for the first question, um yes, I support the staff recommended city park location. And as for the second question about additional considerations, I have um several to add. Uh first, council, I think, or maybe I shouldn't speak for council. Maybe I should say I've really had an education over the last year about the changing nature of um schools, schoolyards, school safety and how cities and schools can and cannot share facilities. And so I'm just really hoping, what I've learned basically over the past year is that for safety reasons and um the uh increasing number of after school activities sharing is much more challenging than it was sixty years ago when we first started sharing facilities with schools. So I'm hoping that this project can be a model of kind of the next generation of school city partnerships that we can kind of use it. We'll be working with, you know, other school districts as well, M V W S D, which is our our local um grade and middle school district and also our our uh high school district. And I'm really hoping that we can use this um new partnership as a model for, as I said, kind of the next generation of partnerships. Um I'm hoping we can use it to serve the health and recreational needs of a a larger demographic than we often have in the past. I think in the past, we've also often um focused our our parks and schoolyards, particular some of our parks associated with the schoolyards um in in large part with um ball fields, which is an important, you know, that's an important part of what we do in parks and schools. Um but I think it it serves a very small demographic, kind of a um a younger, often more male, often more um people who can afford to be part of of leagues uh demographic. And that's a demographic that's important to serve. You know, my son was in that demographic and and pe- my son and people like him need to be served. But I think we need to to sort of re-envision what we do with parks and schoolyards and make sure that they um that they serve all of our population. Um I just came back from Colorado where I got to look at some of their schools and associated parks. And I was really inspired by sort of the health and recreational uh nature of of those spaces. They celebrated nature. They were more than lawn and blacktop. Um they, you know, they celebrated the recreational activities of of people who do more than um team sports, you know, whether it's running and walking paths, garden beds, music stages. So I'm hoping and and some of our new council biodiversity goals, um you know, they were truly beautiful places to be. So um I'm hoping that we can, that's kind of my additional input. I'm hoping that we can use this great new partnership to do some of those things. And I'm, I should ask, Ed, I'm I'm really happy to see um representatives from the uh architectural firm Gelfand in the as one of the participants. I know they've done a lot of the Los Altos schools and a lot of other wonderful schools um in, well, where I used to work in Oakland. And so um, you know, I'm I'm hoping we can work with great architects like like Gelfand, who I've always admired, and also with um yeah, other organizations that I know the Los Altos schools have worked with, like the living classroom, putting outdoor garden beds and outdoor classrooms. Um I could make comments. I don't want to go on too long, but I could make comments about um serving the disabled as well. But but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Abi Koga.
Thank you, and thank you to staff for your hard work and thank you to L A S D um staff as well for the collaboration. Um I support uh staff's recommendation on question one. Um and with question two, um I think that that my interest, um having been on the committee a a long time ago when we talked about this and um we, I I I think, if I remember correctly, I I and I think it's important to mention that, you know, the two acre city park is separate from this four acre joint use space, because I've seen emails that think it's all the same. There's one be very clear that there there's a distinction. But if I remember correctly, too, the two acre park was enabled be it by this this parcel. So originally, it was part of the Gray Star development across the way. I think they were gonna offer in lieu fees, but then this opportunity came about and that's what's enabled the two acre park. So um it I yeah, I just want to, you know, kind of provide that historic background um and the opportunity that this presented, and that's why we're here the way we are. So I think, you know, the city park will be designed through our regular process. And that's um, that's great because we have a great process. But in terms of the joint use for um sp- uh space that we're talking about, um I actually, you know, having been, yeah, uh uh being on that committee when we were talking about the site, um there really was an interest from the neighborhood to have facilities like a track and field. I don't know about soccer fields and baseball fields, but this area, this part of town does not have those facilities. And so that was really the interest. And um, you know, I'm also interested in the gym piece because that came up as well. So um, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Hicks's comments. But in for this area, it was really about the facility, the needs for facilities. So I just want to make sure that we are able to fit those facilities in the space. I read some, I think in the staff report, it might be a tight squeeze and that would be my concern. Um the other concern is um or interest is the use of those fields or the facilities, you know, after hours. I think that's been the challenge with some of our other joint use agreement parks. And so I just want to make sure that we do get, you know, ample time or ample use of those facilities after hours. And um, I know there were some question, written questions about current uses. I'd be interested in getting that information so we can really see exactly how much use we've, our community residents will be able to get from this. But otherwise, um thanks for the update and let's keep moving forward. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Uh councilmember Madashe.
Yeah, so um I am question number one. Yes, I do support the recommended location for the city park. Now, question two, um I I do want to make sure that as plans progress, that the two acres, approximately two acres uh for the city park remains a city park and remains open to residents um all the time and that there's no limitations on that. Um I know that's the way we're heading, but I just want to emphasize that that is the way I'd like it to stay heading. Um and um I also um I would prefer to have the track, the soccer field and the baseball field on the four acres, approximately four acres of joint use property, unless the neighborhood is okay with maybe some of that being in the city park. Uh but I want to make sure we go through the traditional process to design the city park and get a lot of neighborhood input, uh because they might not want that. Um and they might be expecting for all of that to be provided on the joint use acreage. Um and I would also want to make sure that the neighborhood has good access to the facilities and the joint use property. And and I am concerned that if the facilities are booked by um sports teams, that then there's not much time for neighborhood use that might be casual, informal, you know, a pickup game. So um I, you know, I don't know how we balance that or who actually controls how much the facilities would be scheduled and therefore preclude use by the neighborhood. Um but I want to make sure the neighborhood has good use of those facilities. That was, you know, partially why we supported uh this um arrangement is because we wanted to bring some facilities to the neighborhood. So um I want to make sure there's good availability of those facilities. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Shawalter.
Yeah, um I first of all, I'd like to, I'd like to thank staff of um the City Mountain View and also the Los Altos School District for all the work they've done to get to this point. I know it's it's been a lot. And I'd also like to thank Margaret Abicoga for sitting on that um committee for us years ago. I know it was um not the most pleasant task you ever had. But um you did it with the with the good humor and um you kept reporting back and we really appreciated it. So thanks for doing that. Um I kind of adding on to or really not just saying ditto to to mostly what people have said thus far. Um we do want our parks to be available for our community all the time. I mean, that's just a a basis for a park. And of course, we want to maximize the joint use of the facilities that are built there. And um uh that that's just, that's just very basic. And um we we have a great program for designing parks. And um so I think that, you know, the the uh there's a lot of strength in using that process. And um hopefully, the people who were involved in the um the discussions um when with uh councilmember Abicoga will step up again to um to come and share their that what they learned in that process and to and to continue with the park design. I would also like to just put in a plug for saving the mural on the Joanne fabric. I don't know if it's possible to do that, but um I personally think murals are great and I love public art. And if there is a way to incorporate that, I think that would be really nice. So anyway, thanks for a good job. And my answer is yes on um both of those, basically yes on both of those questions.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. Um well, I am definitely a a yes on question one. I think that um staff has done a a very good job of of finding the location that's that's available. I am very interested in the bike pedestrian uh access and comfort and safety. And I know that in the staff reports, some of that kind of depends on some future um uh developments happening. Um so that's something that I would like to really see folded in. And um I'm interested in the access um issues that councilmember Hicks raised. And in particular, in um the use of natural materials um like fines for um pathways and and less um sort of manufactured um uh use of materials. Um I would like to see if there's a a way that we kind of uh keep this segment of the Hachachi right of way in communication with the other segments within the city, because I think that we still do have a possibility in the future of sort of a pathway orientation um along Hachachi. And so as the the various sites come up that are related to that, I want to make sure that we're um uh keeping that um as as an open question and an open possibility for the future. And then for me, as as some of the other council members have alluded to, um the expectations are really important. And as councilmember Madashek noted, um you know, really uh ensuring the open access for the community and and for that neighborhood that um does not have a a lot of open space right now. Um and I I think that just making sure that we have those guarantees on the front end so that um we're not, you know, surprised by things later. Uh the more clarity that we can have um about things, I think is very, very important. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um my comments are substantially similar to um the contributions already made. Uh question one, I uh support the staff recommendation. For question two, um I did want to uh echo what uh councilmember Madashek had said about uh process that um solicits the input of the community or the neighborhood nearby on what we want to see in the city park. I don't know. Um and I think it's a good idea to uh to do a deep dive and, you know, discern whether there are uh have more active facilities there or if we want passive uses. So I I I like that idea. Um and the only other uh feedback I have is I I am a little concerned about um the encroachment of the easements into the usable space. And if there are opportunities to to maximize the the usable space, both for the city park and the joint use uh facilities, that would be ideal. Um and the I I want to thank staff with the the briefings that were provided. Those were very helpful. And in those, we talked a little bit about uh Pachetti Way and um the circulation map that uh staff provided. Um I guess I'm, I think it would be worth exploring whether we necessarily need uh two way right of way for cars going around um, you know, the the park or the school area. I lived in this area for a while. I I wonder if we can make do with uh with a one way circulation that might allow for more space for park facilities or uh, you know, bicycle pedestrian facilities. I'm open minded on what we might use with that space, but two way circulation in this area feels um uh a bit excessive, but I think it it certainly merits some additional study. And I'd be eager to hear what public works staff conclude. Um but aside from that, I agree with uh pretty much everything that everyone else has um already said. And I appreciate uh staff's work on this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So I think everyone has kind of provided the feedback to the two questions. So I'll provide mine, um which is um for question one, yes, I support the staff recommended city park location. And um I think for question two, my colleagues have summarized it pretty well. Um and the vice mayor actually touched on something that I was thinking about that had it wasn't mentioned, but but he did, which is, you know, how do we maximize um the space? Um yeah, and I think that's something that probably the city and L A S D are most interested in is maximizing the utilization of the space and know that as we're talking about the city park location, how we can, how we can do that. Um I also um appreciate that this has been a long journey and a long process. So thank you to staff. Thank you to L A S D. Thank you to councilmember Abicoga um for for bringing us to the place we are now, which is, I think, really exciting, talking about um, you know, future park and and facilities in an area that's much needed. And really appreciate um what I saw in the staff report in terms of the community outreach and input. I think that's really going to be critical. So um especially related to, I think, the vice mayor's mentioning, you know, circulation. Um, you know, so many of the comments we get, because there was the San Antonio precise plan one, and then the S A P two is like how to improve all circulation. Um but I was sure it's cycling and vehicular to to make it an area that thrives and doesn't bottleneck. Um and so um I know that we'll be thinking about that as well. But I really appreciate everything that's gone into it and think that um we've been able to find really creative ways to get um input from residents. So um encouraged by by that. So does um staff need any other kind of answers or questions from us? It sounded like question one was unanimous from council, seven yeses on question one. For question two, I think you got kind of an, an array but of feedback, but I, but I don't know if you need any further clarification. Ms. Shapiro, do you need anything else?
I think I got pretty, pretty clear concurrence across all, all the council members. I'll just quickly turn to RT, she asked about, just to see if she has any, any clarifications or questions, she thinks.
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe Ms. Shavasta, can you just summarize what you heard for council and the public? Thank you.
Yes, I think all the council members wanted to make sure that the two acres of the city had the ability to design that, use our community process for sure, and then have that open to our residents at, at all times like our parks. On the joint use open space, what we heard is we do want to work with LASD to maximize the use of it by the community, acknowledging that the school will need it for some time and balance it between that and any sports teams and leagues. So the community and the neighborhood does have use of the space, so we will work with the school district on that. And then I think we also heard that some amount of re-envisioning of the open space to add other aspects of it to the extent feasible. I think we'll do our best on the four acres, but we certainly can do a lot more on the two acres, bringing other aspects of health, nature, you know, running, walking, natural paths. What I also heard was that community outreach is important, access is important, and that we need to maximize the open space and look at ways to do that. We can certainly study the right-of-way and see if there are any revisions to be brought forward. Although I, I do understand that we've got, I think, some precise plan issues also to work through, so we'll do our best within that. I, that's kind of my, my summary. I, I hope that, that summarizes it.
Great. Thank you. I think that that's a great synopsis. Does council, is council okay with what you heard here? All right. Okay. Well, I think that that means that staff has what they need. So we can end our study session and we can resume our regular session at 6:30, which will be really exciting because we will have our middle school mayor for a day. So we'll see everyone at 6:30. Thank you.
And welcome back from our break. Welcome to the City Council Regular and Shoreline Regional Park Community Special Joint Meeting on October 26, 2021. I'm going to read the usual announcement as required. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with City of Mountain View City Council Resolution Number 18603, in accordance with Assembly Bill 361. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legistar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview.gov/CC-speakers to enter the Zoom meeting or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128 and entering webinar ID 817-7873-3018. Any emails received by 4:30 PM today were received directly by the City Council. Tonight, we have a very special guest, our Mayor for a Day Middle School Contestant Winner, Drew Vijay. Drew, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you Drew. So now we'll move on to Item 2, which is our roll call. The City Clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abbe Koga. Sorry, I didn't hear that. Maybe she's not here. Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Lieber.
Here.
Councilmember Maticek.
Here.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
And Mayor Kamai.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, so we'll move on to Item 3, which is our presentations. And we'll now take public comment for the presentation item. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the presentation item listed on the agenda? If so, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Alright, I see one hand, so we'll set a two-minute timer. And this is for Item 3.1, which is our certification of recognition for Drew Vijay for our Middle School Mayor for a Day. Bria?
Sorry, wrong item.
Okay, no problem. That's why I wanted to clarify. No problem. Okay. So it looks like we don't have public comments on this item. So we'll move on to 3.1, our really exciting item for today, which is our Mayor for a Day Essay Contest Winner. So our Mayor for a Day Essay Contest ran through the month of September. Elementary and middle school aged Mountain View residents wrote about what Mountain View would be like if they were mayor for a day. An elementary school and middle school winner were selected by me. And we are joined, we were joined by our elementary school winner at our October 12th meeting. And this meeting, we're very privileged to have Drew Vijay join us as our middle school winner. Drew attends Block Intermediate and is in the 8th grade. And Drew, do you want to share your essay with all of us, City Council and the public who's watching?
Alright. I have lived in Mountain View for the entire 13 years of my life. I have benefited from being part of the socioeconomic and cultural diversity of Mountain View. If I were mayor for a day, it would look like any other day, but I would get a chance to, a chance to highlight the resources that Mountain View has to promote this diversity. I would start my day by using one resource that Mountain View has to offer, the Mountain View Community Bus, which is a great form of sustainable transport. I would go to the downtown Castro Street Eats. There, I would experience people from different backgrounds and income levels supporting the local small businesses and feel part of the community. People would be able to enjoy the fresh air and delicious food while staying safe amid this pandemic. Next, I would highlight the Mountain View Teen Center. Here, kids of many backgrounds could participate in activities all for free. They can play video games, sports, table games, and even learn how to cook in the large kitchen there. Not to mention, they are able to meet new people and make friends. Finally, I would highlight the affordable housing in Mountain View. I realize that many people that work in the city don't get to enjoy the city they work in. A personal example that I have experienced is with my teachers. Many of my teachers live in different cities than Mountain View. People could benefit from knowing the affordable housing options in the city. This would result in more socioeconomic diversity in the city, which in turn would result in a more diverse and charming city of Mountain View. In conclusion, if I were mayor for a day, it wouldn't look much different, but I would be able to highlight the many resources that Mountain View has to offer.
Yay, great, thank you. Thanks so much for sharing your passion for our community and especially your inclusion of all our community members, and thank you so much for participating in our essay contest. You will be receiving a certificate of recognition in the mail very soon, and I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity, if there's anything else you wanted to share with the City Council and the public, Drew.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council members for the opportunity today. And after writing my essay, like I became more interested in the different decisions that Mountain View City Council makes, and I might want to be part of the Youth Advisory Committee in the future.
Great, thank you, thank you so much. And I think maybe people have read about you as well as our elementary school winner. I know that the Mountain View Voice interviewed you, and I think the Los Altos Town Cryer interviewed you. So you are our celebrity of the day today too, so thank you so much. So I think if you don't mind, we can take a quick, I'll take a quick screenshot photo, because unfortunately, we can't all be in person, Drew, is that okay? And then we'll make sure that we send it to you.
Alright.
Okay, cool. Alright, ready everyone? One, two, three. Alright, Ace Drew. And then I wanted to open it up to my council colleagues. Would any member of the council like to say a few words? Councilmember Lieber.
Well, Mayor Drew, I really appreciate you joining us. I think you're a great booster for Mountain View, and I hope that you keep up your interest in public service. You're obviously going places.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else like to say a few words? Alright, well Drew, I'm really excited that you were able to join us. And you know what? You made us on time today, which is like a really good thing for us, because sometimes we're late. So thank you so much for everything. It's really wonderful to see you participate, to hear what you had to say, and really can't wait to see what you do next in our great city. So thank you so much. Let's give Drew another round of applause. Yay. Alright Drew, thank you. Have a great night. Appreciate it.
Thank for having, thank you for having me.
Of course. Alright, thanks everyone. So we'll move on to Item 4, which is our Consent Calendar. The, these items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of resolutions and ordinances will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. As a reminder, the purpose of the consent calendar is for the council to efficiently and quickly consider a high volume of routine or administrative business items with one motion. Although council members may remove items, it is generally not intended for the council to have a lengthy substantive discussion on consent calendar items. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Alright, not seeing any hands. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on any item on the consent calendar? If so, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone, and we'll display a two-minute timer on the screen. Okay, I am not seeing any hands, so I will bring the item back for council action. And note that a motion to approve the consent calendar should include reading the title of the resolutions attached to Items 4.2 and 4.3. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move the staff recommendation, including Item 4.2, Adopt a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View Approving the Final Map of Tracks Number 10497, 1255 Pear Avenue, Accepting Dedications and Making Findings as Required by the City Code, and Item 4.3, Adopt a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View Directing All Legislative Bodies of the City of Mountain View Subject to the Brown Act to Continue to Meet Remotely in accordance with Assembly Bill 361 and Making Findings Pursuit to Assembly Bill 361.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shawalter?
I second the motion.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Shawalter. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbe Koga. Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Maticek.
Yes.
And Mayor Kamai.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we'll move on to Item 5, which is Oral Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone, and we'll display a three-minute timer on the screen. Great. Tim McKenzie?
Greetings all. Tim McKenzie, he/him pronouns, resident of the Montaloma neighborhood. The stationary engineers at Kaiser Permanente have been on strike for a little over a month. I believe they were picketing in Santa Clara, the city, and in Redwood City recently. And, and I heard last week that Kaiser Permanente had reached out to elected officials and asked them to remain on the sidelines in the issue, on the issue. I know that there's a Kaiser in Mountain View, so I think that there's a relevance in our elected officials speaking up. And I would personally, as a resident of the city, really like to see my council members standing up on the side of workers, for the striking workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Jeans?
Hi there, I have some slides and I have my own timer. Great, whoops.
So Albert, I appreciate your timer, but I'm going to go by the staff timer, okay?
Sure, sure, okay. I'll just use mine as a guide. Okay, good evening, Mayor Kamai and council members. I'm Albert Jeans. As you know, longtime resident of Sterling Estates. I just wanted to share with you and the public what's been happening in our part of town as a result of Measure C, though, narrow streets ordinance. The signs have been installed in our area and they are working. However, as expected, more and more oversized vehicles are appearing on Terabella Avenue since the street is 45 feet wide, not 40 feet. Here's what the street looked like five years ago, and next slide, please. Here's what it looks like today. And obviously, it's a big change. Currently, roughly 50% of the cursed space is now parked, and I expect this to increase. I'm not complaining. I mean, I'm, I don't like it, but I'm, you know, this is what I expected with Measure C because of the width of Terabella. Of course, this impacts the businesses that occupy this slight industrial area. But what motivated me to show this to you tonight is what a neighbor told me. She no longer lets her children use Terabella to walk to school because nobody would be able to see them from the street. In fact, a solid wall of large vehicles would prevent the police from being able to effectively patrol in vehicles at any time of the day. This is a safety issue which I really hadn't thought of before. My neighbors and I are now petitioning the city to install bike lanes here, and that would solve this problem. But I'm sure that there are other parts of Mountain View that will face this problem sooner or later. And I hope we can work to a good solution to that. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, so that concludes public comment, so we can bring this item back to council. We'll move on to Item 6, Public Hearing. We have none, so we can move on to Item 7, which is a continuation of our study session. Item 7.1 is our Wage Theft and Responsible Construction Ordinances. The purpose of this study session is to receive City Council input on the development of a wage theft ordinance and a responsible construction ordinance to enhance wage protections for workers in the city of Mountain View. After the presentation, the council will answer the following questions in turn. Question 1, does council support staff's recommended strategy for the development of a wage theft ordinance? And question 2, does council support staff's recommended strategy for the development of a responsible construction ordinance? Assistant to the City Manager Christina Gilmore will present the memo. Management Fellow Harsha Ramchandani, Assistant City Attorney Nicole Wright, and Assistant City Manager and Chief Operating Officer Audrey Seymour-Ramberg are available for questions. So we'll start with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask the clerk if they're going to allow Harsha to join. She's going to run the presentation for me while I speak.
Thanks, Ms. Gilmore. We'll bring her over.
Thank you. Okay. Wonderful. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Christina Gilmore, Assistant to the City Manager. I am also joined here this evening by Harsha Ramchandani, our management fellow here in the City Manager's office. The purpose of this study session item is to receive City Council input on the development of a wage theft ordinance and a responsible construction ordinance to enhance wage protection for workers in the city of Mountain View. The City Council adopted a minimum wage ordinance in 2014, and then 2019, wage theft advocates approached the City Council and asked them to consider developing a wage theft ordinance and a responsible construction ordinance as part of their 2019, 2021 City Council major goal-setting process. The City Council included the development of a wage theft ordinance and a responsible construction ordinance as part of their goal-setting. And in July, beginning in July of 2019, staff began to engage with the advocates in the building trades and the wage theft coalition to research existing regulations and what other cities were currently doing in regards to these two ordinances. Staff also met with staff to begin developing recommended strategies for incorporating ordinances into our existing permit processes. The, the process of developing the two strategies that we're discussing here today was put on hold in early 2020 due to the COVID pandemic, and staff picked up the development of the two wage, the two strategies that we'll discuss tonight in the fall of 2020. Wage theft occurs when an employee does not receive the wages they are owed. So some examples include, but are not limited to, paying less than minimum wage, bouncing checks, or not being allowed to use paid sick leave. Industries that are at high risk for wage theft include Industries that are at high risk for wage theft include retail, caregiving, massage and spa, construction, and service industries like janitorial services and hotel cleaning staff amongst others. Responsible construction refers to wage protections and other provisions specific to the construction industry. Staff's approach is to look at the proposed wage theft and responsible construction strategies as supporting the adopted minimum wage ordinance in addition to prevailing wage requirements and wage and hour laws enforced by the state. In two thousand and eleven, the state enacted the California Wage Theft and Prevention Act. The state requires all employers to comply with various wage and hour laws. These include, for example, minimum wages per hour, allowances for required meal and rest breaks, overtime, paid sick leave, reimbursement for business expenses, and payment for promissive occasions or bonuses. As mentioned earlier in this presentation, when an employee does not receive their required wages, this is referred to as wage theft. Prevailing wage is also a current wage and hour law that's in effect. And that refers to the minimum wage required to be paid to workers based on their classification for work performed on a public works project that is paid in full and whole or in part by public funds. These existing wage and hour laws protect workers' rights and enable workers who have experienced wage theft to file a claim with the state to recover wages or other compensation and penalties. Staff recommends that the business license application and renewal process be used as a way to seek compliance with wage laws. All businesses subject to the business license requirements would be required to submit an affidavit as part of the business license application process that attest that the business does not have any unsatisfied labor law judgments or orders against them. The intent is to encourage compliance with wage and hour laws. Failure to submit the affidavit would result in administrative compliance orders and citations imposing administrative penalties. Additionally, submittal of a false attestation may be subject to the administrative civil or criminal penalties dependent upon the circumstances. Due to limited resources for the affidavits for processing the affidavits, staff would affidavits would not be verified by staff, but rather, the city staff would investigate complaints received alleging an attestation contained false information. So this here is just a process workflow that visually describes what I just talked about. So again, for the wage theft, we are recommending that an applicant submit an affidavit as part of the work, their business license process or renewal. Once the affidavit is submitted, if there are no claims of false affidavit, then they will receive, they are within compliance. If an affidavit is not submitted, then that triggers the administrative penalty enforcement process. And additionally, if it is found that a permity has submitted an affidavit that's false, it triggers the administrative penalty enforcement process. Staff has identified the building permit process as an appropriate vehicle for communicating and seeking compliance for responsible construction wage protections. We recommend that all commercial and multifamily housing construction projects above fifteen thousand square feet per structure, including new construction and renovation projects, be subject to the requirements that confirm wage and hour laws were complied for with the project. The permit applicant for the project would be required at the beginning of the permit application process to submit a pay transparency acknowledgement form that certifies that all applicable labor laws will be adhered to and that a notice outlining workers' rights will be posted at visible locations on the job site. After the construction project has been completed, the permity would be required to submit to the city a pay attestation form for the general contractor and qualifying subcontractors, certifying that they comply with the applicable laws and notices of workers' rights were posted at visible locations on the job sites. Like the proposed wage theft ordinance strategy, failure to submit the acknowledgement and pay attestation would result in administrative compliance orders and citations imposing administrative penalties. Submittal of a false pay attestation would also be subject to penalties which may include administrative civil or criminal remedies dependent upon the circumstances. Due to limited staff resources and the anticipated high volume of pay attestations for any project subject to the ordinance, the pay attestations submitted would not be verified by staff. The city would investigate complaints received that allege a pay attestation contained false information. Staff is not recommending that the responsible construction ordinance be applied to the public works projects, to public works projects subject to prevailing wage due to the additional protections already in place for public works projects. And again, this is an example of the process I just described in visual form. It's the same as the wage theft ordinance. The only difference is for the responsible construction. Staff is recommending that the submittal process is a two-step process. So again, at the beginning of the project, a pay transparency form is submitted. And then at the end of the project, an attestation form is submitted. Staff seeks council's feedback on the following two questions. Does council support staff's recommended strategy for the development of a wage theft ordinance? And does council support staff's recommended strategy for the development of a responsible construction ordinance? Following feedback from the city council at the study session, staff proposes a timeline of next steps with the development of wage theft and responsible construction ordinances over the next several quarters in the calendar year of twenty twenty-two. This includes stakeholder engagement and outreach to seek input on the proposed ordinances, education and building awareness, developing a compliance and enforcement process, and incorporating the ordinances into existing permit processes. Staff proposes to return to council in the fall of twenty twenty-two for ordinance introduction and adoption with a proposed effective date in January of twenty twenty-three. This concludes the presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So since this is a study session, I'll go to public comment first and then bring it back to council. So would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We'll display a two minute timer on the screen. And just as a reminder for folks who may just be joining us, we're doing item seven point one, which is our wage theft and responsible construction ordinances. Alright, so we'll start with Albert Jeans.
Sorry, I thought I lowered my hand.
Oh, no, no problem, Albert. Okay, not on this item then?
No.
Okay. How about Tim McKenzie?
Greetings all. Tim McKenzie, he/him pronouns, resident of the Montaloma neighborhood. Love the idea of a wage theft ordinance. I wholly support it. And also just sort of want to plant the seed as the process moves forward of wage theft being people not given the wages that they are due. I'm aware of a practice that I see a lot. I've seen it at Stanford of hiring, quote, subcontracted workers who are essentially employees of a business, doing the same work as other people that are directly employed, but being paid less than the other people because they're, quote, subcontracted. I know that's a fairly common business practice around, and that sounds to me like a situation where someone may be denied the wages that they are due. And I'd hope that framing could perhaps be incorporated into this wage theft ordinance. Thank you, staff and council for all your work on this. Seems great.
Thank you. Louise Auerhan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Louise Auerhan with Working Partnerships USA. And first, I want to thank Mountain View City Council for your longstanding leadership in empowering low-wage workers, including in raising the minimum wage. And thank you for considering these measures tonight. As you know and as you've heard, wage theft is an alarmingly widespread crime and construction is one of the main centers where it occurs. The Wage Theft Coalition recent report found that over twelve thousand Santa Clara County construction workers have been victims of wage theft, robbed of over forty-six million dollars in wages that they earned, and that's only the cases that are documented. And we know that this crime is especially directed against vulnerable Latino and Asian workers. Wage theft targeting workers of color and immigrants is actually a major source of pay inequity. We've found that Latino construction workers in San Jose bring home thirty-eight percent less paid than white construction workers. And part of the reason is they're not being paid what they're owed. At the same time, allowing these handful of unscrupulous companies to get away with wage theft harms the majority of responsible business owners, including many of our small local businesses who are trying to play by the rules and treat their workers fairly but can't compete with those who cheat. So I urge you to pass a strong wage theft and responsible construction ordinance and to strongly consider tying it to the building permit rather than just administrative citation. We really want to focus on the outcome that if a company has already been convicted and found in order to pay a wage theft judgment, it should pay that judgment, point blank. And I don't know if it already is refusing to pay a judgment ordered by the state. Is it really going to pay the city's administrative citation? That seems like that might be an issue, so I urge you to look at the building permit as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. SMW one oh four Keith Silva.
Yes, hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So my name's Keith Silva. I'm with Sheet Metal Workers Local one oh four. I've been part of the local for the past twenty-one years. This past year, I was elected to be business representative for Northern Santa Clara, which includes the city of Mountain View. I'm here to speak in support of a responsible construction ordinance because it is the right thing to do. Mountain View was a leader on adopting a livable minimum wage ordinance, and I feel this is the next logical step. It is not just a union or non-union thing, but a way to assure that construction workers are not being exploited. Yes, I said workers and not just my members, but all construction workers. You see, under prevailing wage projects, the information is public knowledge and our compliance department can check certified payrolls and to see if the proper rates are being applied. Our business development department reaches out to workers doing this covered work on these sites and let them know that they can turn to us to stop being victimized due to wage theft. A lot of time, bad contractors will actually pay out a prevailing rate, but demand that workers give money back. So they only look good on paper, but in reality, they are thieves. How do we know this is not happening right now on private projects right here in Mountain View? We have no way of knowing because construction workers who wages are being stolen have no one to turn to. A responsible construction ordinance will provide open competition and bidding to all the high-road contractors and will not be punished out by the bad contractors by making them unable to exploit their workers. It will provide a level playing field for all honest contractors and will benefit all construction workers. I thank you for your time, and I know Mountain View will continue to be the leader for workers' protections and rights.
Thank you. Doug Cheshire.
Good evening, Mayor Kamai and fellow city council members. My name is Doug Cheshire. I'm a field representative for Carpenters Local four oh five here in Santa Clara County. And on behalf of thirty-eight thousand working men and women here in Northern California, I'm here this evening to voice support for a responsible construction ordinance. An ordinance which is overdue, workers cannot afford to wait any longer. UC Berkeley researchers found in a twenty twenty-one study that almost half of families of construction workers in California are enrolled in a safety net program at an annual cost of over three billion dollars. Theft of overtime wages, break-time wages contribute to this costly problem. Workers cannot afford to wait for the status quo to change. On October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, it was reported that a drywall contractor based in California had been fined one point seven million dollars for wage and hour violations affecting two hundred and sixty-five workers, according to the Labor Commissioner's Office. And yesterday, the DIRR publicized the issuance of citations against another drywall contractor based in California for seven million dollars in wage and penalties. Among the violations, failure to properly inform workers about their wages and other compensation at the time of hire and failure to issue workers properly itemized wage statements. Four point eight million in damages for failures affecting seven hundred and twenty-four employees. Workers vulnerable to wage theft cannot afford to wait for a process to drag on for one more year. Though a responsible construction ordinance is a great start, it is just a step in the right direction to where we need to be. We need to look toward construction standards that provide a pathway to a career through a joint labor management apprenticeship programs with healthcare and benefits for families to thrive here in Mountain View. I urge council and staff to hasten the process and implement an ordinance that will protect workers from the predators that exploit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Silverthog.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Santa Clara County Wage Theft Coalition and the Alexander Community Law Center. I want to thank the staff, the mayor and council members for making wage theft a priority. However, we do have concerns about the proposed ordinance. The ordinance's enforcement mechanism is solely administrative citations that are available in the case of false affidavits and failure to complete the affidavit. The city will still issue licenses, building permits and certificates of occupancy even if an employer has unpaid wage theft judgments. We have no problem with a hefty administrative citation for false disclosure statements provided that it is not just the statutory administrative citation, but a significant amount. However, if an employer or contractor or subcontractor has an unpaid wage theft judgment, they should be required to post a bond in the amount of the judgment or forfeit the ability to obtain a building permit until the judgment is paid or there's a payment plan. Also, the disclosure in the ordinance is overbroad and therefore unenforceable. It covers all labor laws. It must be specific. It should cover not only unpaid wage theft judgments, but in the case of responsible construction, unpaid payroll taxes, workers' comp insurance, and whether or not the contractor or subcontractor is licensed. If it's specific, then it will be enforceable. Three, it should cover day workers since wage theft in that sector is rampant. It should also address its own contracting, the way San Jose, Santa Clara County, Milpitas and Sunnyvale have done. We do not expect the city of Mountain View to verify any of the attestations, affidavits or affidavits. However, if necessary, it'll be very easy since the Labor Commission now has a public database online. You can also call or email Matt Siroli, who's head of the Judgment Enforcement Unit of the Labor Commission, and he will verify. Thank you again for all of your hard work on this.
Great, thank you. Forrest. Here we go. Forrest?
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, news Dr. Forrest Peterson. I'm a postdoctoral researcher now at the Center for Integrated Facilities Engineering at Stanford University. I'm here speaking with the Wage Theft Coalition, who have had an ongoing collaboration with Stanford University Engineering for the past five years to better understand wage theft in the construction industry. I'm somewhat unique in that, that before I was a union concrete laborer with Launa for five years. I was a day worker, a day laborer doing tile work, some of that here in Mountain View. I still remember knocking on the door of a contractor and asking them, why didn't they pay the subcontractor that I worked for? And they said because they weren't paid by the contractor they were working for and agreed that all of us were supposed to have been paid, and it was theft. So from that background and that understanding as a researcher, that's what I bring here today to to share with the honorable city council that wage theft isn't just about the paperwork. It is about the day workers who really fly under the radar and aren't always a part of the system and have the ability to walk up and ask for their wages. As a young resident of San Jose, even I had a difficult time navigating that system. So I can't imagine how many other people would be able to navigate that system when the informal marketplace in the construction industry is absolutely rampant. And that is one that I can say, as Stanford University Engineering is a component of the construction industry that must be considered, is how to capture the day workers. that must be considered, is how to capture the the day workers, the labors, the concrete labors of this industry who are so often taken advantage of. So once again, I want to thank my esteemed colleagues who've spoken, and I particularly appreciated the comments made by Luis. That was that was an incredibly in-depth explanation. And I think Ruth Silvertop has really explained some of the issues that really should be picked up in the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Delatorre.
Hi, good evening. My name is Krista Delatorre, and I am here today on behalf of the South Bay Labor Council. I want to thank the city staff, city council and mayor for their work on the wage theft and responsible development ordinance. In its present form, the ordinance is pretty limited in its ability to prevent employers, contractors and subcontractors with unpaid wage theft judgments from further shortchanging their employees. First, the ordinance is limited because it uses administrative citations as its sole enforcement mechanism. And as we know, administrative citations are only available in the case of false affidavits and disclosures. If employers, contractors or subcontractors have unpaid wage theft judgments, they should be required to post a bond in the amount of the unpaid wage theft judgment. Until a wage theft judgment is paid or there's a payment plan in place, employers should be required to forfeit their ability to obtain a building permit or certificate of occupancy. Second, the ordinance lacks specific language on provisions for workers' comp insurance coverage, unpaid wage theft judgments and payroll taxes, and license versus unlicensed contractors and subcontractors. Specific language will make the ordinance enforceable and help Mountain View avoid human trafficking cases like slavery towers. Third, the ordinance is limited because it does not contain protections for day laborers with unpaid unpaid wage theft judgments. Because they work an average of two days, Mountain View day laborers are often victims of wage theft. This should be reflected in the ordinance. Fourth, the city of Mountain View should rely on the Labor Commission's online public database to verify attestations and affidavits. It's easy to use. Just enter an employer's name and you can see whether or not a wage theft judgment has been paid. I want to thank you again for your work on these ordinances and for prioritizing the eradication of wage theft here in the city of Mountain View. We hope that the ordinance will adopt changes so it can better deter wage theft. Thank you.
Thank you. Felmina Opisio Mondina.
Good evening. My name is Felmina Opisio Mondina. I'm with the Santa Clara Wage Theft Coalition, and I'm also with the Philippine Association of Workers and Immigrants, or POWIs. First of all, I would like to thank the Mountain View City Council and staff. We really appreciate this ordinance. And most of our community members are caregivers who are victims of wage theft. While we support the administrative citation, we feel that this is not enough and just a slap on the wrist. I reiterate some of the comments that there must be a bond requirement or the withholding of the ability to obtain a building permit or certificate of occupancy so that this ordinance will have more teeth and will really deter wage theft. And also, the disclosure requirement is too general and overbroad. It must be specific to cover unpaid payroll taxes, workers' compensation insurance coverage, and whether or whether or not the contractor or subcontractor is licensed in addition to unpaid wage theft. And third, we also would like to ask that the Mountain View day workers should be covered in this ordinance. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Felicia Gershberg.
Hi, I'm Felicia Gershberg. I'm co-lead of the local activist group Together We Will San Jose, a member of the Santa Clara County Wage Theft Coalition and a longtime resident of neighboring Sunnyvale. I want to say many thanks to staff for their work on the wage theft and responsible construction ordinances and to the mayor and council for prioritizing these issues. It's important to make sure that these important ordinances have sufficient specificity and teeth to protect all workers in Mountain View, including day workers. I support the recommendations stated in the letter you received from Ruth Silvertop of the Wage Theft Coalition, which spells out the disclosure and enforcement language that is needed, and I echo and support the comments she and other members of the coalition made this evening. Robust language in these ordinances will ensure that the city of Mountain View is rigorously protecting workers in our community, as I know is your intent. Thank you again for your work and for prioritizing workers' rights.
Thank you. Bria.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council members. I'm speaking in support of the Santa Clara. Can you hear me? The time hasn't, okay, sorry, the time's, thanks. I'm speaking in support of the Santa Clara Wage Theft Coalition. Thank you for your hard work on the wage theft and responsible development ordinance and for prioritizing wage theft. I especially want to lift up Dr. Forrest Peterson's emphasis on supporting Mountain View day workers, often immigrant laborers suffering wage theft during this national labor shortage. Still, we have concerns about the ordinance and its ability to deter employers and contractors and subcontractors who have unpaid wage theft judgments. The city will issue licenses, bill permits and certificates of occupancy, even if an employer has unpaid wage theft judgments or a contractor or subcontractor disclosed that they have an unpaid wage theft judgment, no workers' comp insurance and has not paid payroll taxes, and is unlicensed. If an employer or contractor or subcontractor has an unpaid wage theft judgment, they should be required to post a bond in the amount of the unpaid theft or forfeit the ability to obtain a building permit or certificate of occupancy until that wage theft judgment is paid or a payment plan is in place. The disclosure in the ordinance must be specific, cover unpaid payroll taxes, workers' comp insurance, and whether or not the contractor or subcontractor is licensed in addition to unpaid wage theft judgments. Mountain View day workers, as so many before me have said, are often the victims of wage theft. The ordinance contains no protections for day laborers who have unpaid wage theft judgments. For more information and making these decisions, please consult the Labor Commission's public database online for employers' outstanding wage theft judgments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Brown.
Hey, so just to be clear, I can set sign an affidavit saying, I steal wages, niner, niner, and submitted the city and then face no consequences? Okay, cool. Thanks.
Kevin Ma.
Evening, council. My name is Kevin Ma, speaking on myself as a resident in the San Antonio neighborhood. But I do echo all the comments I specified before that we need to make sure that those working in construction and other low, somewhat below wage jobs in this area have the protections necessary to keep them in this area. Fundamentally, like any other law, there needs to be enough enforcement capacity to actually make that law something more than a promise on paper. And as such, I do ask that council look into it as part of next budget cycle or future budget cycles to ensure that there's enough staffing, to ensure that a thing that we kind of do depend on for housing and other development area is done cleanly and ethically and other standards that are entirely in line with what our community should be for. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any more hands, so I will bring this item back to council. Do any council members have any questions before we get into the two questions for deliberation? Councilmember Hicks.
Well, my question is just, we've heard from a number of advocates some additional things that we could put into these ordinances. And I'm just wondering what staff, I can kind of outline what they were, what staff thinks about, you know, what the strengths and weaknesses, you know, any, whether it would be easy or hard to put those in. One is, one I got was not stated during the meeting here, but we we got in an email from Maria Marakine of the Day Worker Center, and she said to put in inclusion and oversight of residential projects less than fifteen thousand square feet, because she said many day, that's what many day workers work on and have trouble with. And then the other were the three that many of the advocates mentioned, but was also in Ruth Silvertop's letter. Those are not just statutory administrative citations, but also posting a bond and so forth. And more specificity, which sounds, in the way that she mentioned, which sounds fairly easy. And then the fourth is specifically including day workers who typically work an average of two days rather than more. So I'd like any comments from staff on how hard or difficult it would be to include those things. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Not sure who would. So I can I can start, and then Assistant City Manager, Chief Operating Officer Audrey Ramberg is also available to answer any questions, as well as Nicole Wright, our senior city attorney. So yes, we've heard, we've heard from the advocates, not only this evening, but also in council public comment that they would like the ordinances to include some stronger protections for workers, specifically for day workers. That is not an area that we had researched when we were developing our strategies. So staff would have to go back after council input and direction on next steps to conduct further research to understand the issue with day workers and how day workers could be incorporated into both of the ordinance to ensure stronger protections. In regards to the other issues that were brought up around bonds, and I don't recall the other ones off the top of my head, but those three issues, items that were mentioned in the public comment, again, staff would need to do some additional research when we go back to develop the ordinances. And we would need to determine and assess how those recommended enforcement strategies would be incorporated into proposed ordinances that we would bring back for council for for adoption.
Okay, thank you unless there are additional staff comments.
I I will build on what Ms. Gilmore stated that, you know, making the language more specific, I think is, you know, certainly we'd be looking to the advocates for input around how to have the language of the ordinances match and mirror our intentions. So that's very valuable input. In terms of the tying it to the building permits, then obviously staff's proposal was different to to have it be an administrative penalty process. But we are aware that there are a couple of other cities nearby us in this county who have have done that in terms of having the building permit and certificate of occupancy dependent upon an attestation and and being in jeopardy if it turns out that that attestation is found to be false. And I think that certainly can be implemented, and we could look to for the right legal mechanisms for doing that. I think the the things to explore are what impact that may have on the streamlining of our permit process and on the staff resources needed for administering the ordinance. And in any event, whatever the enforcement mechanism, we were going to need to come back to identify what additional resources, either on staff or through contract, we would need, as these are not things, you know, wage enforcement is not something that the city currently has as part of its processes.
Okay, thank you. That is additional clarity. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I'm very interested in linking this to building, the ability to use a building. And I I think that we do need more than the administrative remedies because I I think that in that scenario, we could end up with kind of a whack-a-mole situation where there's a there's a changing cast of characters and it's not directly related in the in the case of construction to a building. I also am very interested in the inclusion of our day labor community, as well as our our home care workers and restaurant workers, and providing them with the information about the County Office of Labor Standards Enforcement. And not just being a catcher that relies on on what the employers report to us, but also providing a pathway for workers and advocacy organizations to come forward to report to us and providing them with the information that they need to report to other agencies as well. And I I definitely am on board with the specific information that was enumerated in the letter from the Wage Theft Coalition. I I think making it a specific target is is really important here. And then.
So I'm so sorry, Councilmember Lieber. So are you getting into answering the questions? Or are you providing questions to staff right now? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I I I think I'm just providing feedback here of what I'm looking for.
Okay, do you mind answering questions one and two? It sounds like you have some additions for both of those, so I'll just start taking note of that. I think Councilmember Hicks had a couple of questions, so I thought other people were going to, but it sounds like you're already getting into comments, so I want to make sure that staff and I capture it correctly.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see other, at that time, other hands up, so I I figured segue into the comments to save time.
No, no problem. I just want to make sure I take note.
Yeah, and I I do like the the structure of a bond requirement as well, and I I think that's pretty much what I have.
Okay, great, thanks. And staff, were you able to capture that as well? All right, awesome, great, thank you. Councilmember Michelle Walter, questions one and questions two.
Well, I'll just start off by saying I'm basically supportive of questions one and two. But 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 I still have the overriding question of how is this going to improve the situation? If you're a worker and you're, you know, you didn't get the the wages that you were supposed to get, how is this going to help you get paid versus the state ordinance? That's what I don't really understand. What are we building on top of? What's missing in the state system that we're going to be adding here?
I'm happy to field that question, Councilmember Showalter. So there's, there is, depending on which enforcement penalty the council directs, there would be additional penalty, which is a deterrent. That penalty could be an administrative process with a fee, or it could be withholding of a of a building permit, as is being discussed right now. There's also the additional information and awareness raising that would happen at a local level, which may, with the city and coordination with the wage advocates, similar to how we coordinate with other local community-based organizations around, you know, meeting the needs of vulnerable populations. It it has a additional reach to raise awareness about about it, not just on the employer's part, but on the employee's part. And we can play that conduit role to help people get to the right place to report violations and to seek investigation and judgment. We we aren't stepping in and replacing that function that is currently played at the state level and that we're very hopeful will become a more meaningful opportunity at the county level. They've started in that arena and were a little bit paused by the the pandemic in terms of further rolling that out, but that is in their longer term plan or or hope or intention to to partner more with cities around that to to assist with the enforcement. And so that's that's what I would think is, in addition to what is in place currently with the state. um, with the state, um, uh, laws and, uh, investigations.
Okay, so let me parrot that back to you and make sure I understand it. So basically what you're saying, and it seems true, I mean reasonable, is we're, we're closer to, um, you know, people. We're, we're less intimidating, we'll be providing a lot of education. And, um, uh, so people would be, um, more, uh, willing to come to us than they might be to a state agency. Is that generally?
Yes, or they might come to one of the advocacy groups that have spoken tonight, who would know that they have, you know, an ally and partner at the, at the city to, um, to provide information and, and to have that extra layer of penalty.
Okay, well, I just think that's really important. I mean, I, I really think, you know, the additional, um, uh, result that we bring to the table i- is what matters. Um, and, and so we, we, we need to kind of, we need to concentrate on that. And, um, as I also mentioned, um, when we discussed this, I think yesterday, um, I'm, I am too concerned about the generalness of the, um, you know, the affidavit you have to sign. I thought that it could be quite intimidating to, um, a small business owner and, and it might have the unintended consequence of, um, keeping some people from getting their business license because they would look at that and say, what on earth are all the labor laws? I don't know if I've broken them or not. I'll just try and, and skirt under the radar. So, so I think that we, you know, we want to make this, um, uh, the, the thing that people sign easy enough to understand so that it doesn't have the unintended consequence of, um, cau- causing people to work outside the system. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mattacek.
Thanks. Um, so I appreciate that we are at this point. Um, I know we've been waiting for, on this for a while and a lot of things, uh, got in the way like COVID. Um, but here we are. So thank you for bringing this forward. Um, I'm gonna kind of answer these, uh, questions sort of at the same time. Um, because for both of them, I think we've certainly heard tonight that we need to expand beyond just wage theft and include things like payroll taxes, workers' comp, and some others were listed. And I believe that would apply to both the questions. And then, um, also in terms of who would be covered by this, expanding that. So folks who, um, are day workers or who work on smaller construction projects below fifteen thousand, uh, square feet. And then also, um, I guess I'd say beef up the enforcement. And by that, um, you know, we heard a lot of options here. And I guess from my perspective, since this is a study session and we're providing additional direction, um, for all of these, I guess I'd like staff to take a look at them and come back with their best recommendation on what would be, uh, the best options for our city, given, um, the current situation and the level of staffing or other, um, elements that might be necessary to do enforcement. But I do want it to have more, uh, more of an impact than an administrative fee or fine. Um, unless as some said, you know, it's a pretty hefty fine. Um, I also appreciate what Councilmember Showalter just said about making sure that it's easy to understand um, by the businesses and as well as workers in our city. Um, but again, I appreciate that we're, we're getting there, um, and I look forward to the next discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. And yeah, okay, Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I have a question first. Um, a- as I understand it, uh, sole proprietors who have no employees are not exempt. And, um, I, I don't know if, if staff was intending to, you know, once the ordinance, uh, where the ordinance is become more refined. But, uh, perhaps I'm, I'm, I may also not be appreciating the value of including those businesses as well. Is there, uh, any value at all in including sole, uh, sole proprietors? Or would it make sense to exempt them?
Um, it's not something that we really thought about. So in, in the, the framework of the strategy that we brought forward, we didn't get to that level of specificity around exemptions. But, you know, as you've raised the question, um, if there aren't employees, the form, uh, you know, uh, attesting to complying with, 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 um, wage, um, uh, uh, judgments seems not to be applicable.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, of course, as a, a business grows, if they were to add employees down the road when the business license is renewed, that's an opportunity then, uh, to, uh, to ensure compliance with, with the ordinance. So, uh, that, that seems sensible to me. Um, I, uh, think I'm in substantial agreement with, um, much of what's been said. I appreciate Councilmember, uh, Mattacek's approach in, uh, giving staff some latitude to return with recommendations for how best to, uh, enforce an expanded ordinance based on a lot of the input we've heard. Um, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with, with seeing what that might look like and understanding some of the, the impacts and, um, and, and opportunities, uh, to provide greater protections. So, um, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. Uh, I guess the only other thing, um, that I would want to understand, I, I, I appreciate a lot of the, the recommendations from the public, uh, on how potentially to, to strengthen the enforcement mechanism, uh, and, and looking at building permits and that kind of thing. I'm totally comfortable with exploring that. Um, I think just in thinking about the, the housing element, it, it would be good, I think, for staff to, um, do a little bit of research and return to council with information about whether we would have to include that as a, as a constraint, um, in the, the housing element process. Um, but I think exploring it is, is, is a, is a good idea. And then also ways to, to protect day labors as well. Um, but I'm very comfortable with the direction we're going in. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hicks.
Yeah, so I'm also comfortable with the direction that this is going in, uh, you know, things other council members have, have outlined. Um, I guess the three top things I'm hearing are explore, having staff explore, uh, greater enforcement, um, uh, ways to include day workers, which I won't elaborate because other people have spoken to them, and greater specificity in, uh, exactly what we're enforcing. Um, and I assume that, uh, staff would interact with advocates to, to, you know, explore greater detail and see how to apply it to Mountain View. The two additional things that I heard is, uh, that maybe the county, that I hadn't known before is that maybe the, the county could insist with enforcement. That sounds great to me if that, if we could work with them. I know with the minimum wage, we're working with the city of San Jose. So I, I don't know if that's something that could happen sooner or later, but I'd like to hear, you know, when you come back more about whether that's possible now or later. Um, because maybe that would, uh, answer some of the questions about whether we have to, have to put more resources into this or maybe it would be more efficient to do it another way. And then the other, the last thing is that, and, and is that I, that I really want is, uh, robust outreach and education. I don't want, um, you know, businesses, whether they're small businesses or any businesses for that matter. I know that, uh, in past, uh, council meeting, we were talking about supporting micro enterprises, uh, you know, uh, for women, people of color, low-income people, et cetera. Whether it's a micro business or a larger business, I don't want to blindside people with this. I don't want to kind of catch them unaware of some of the, um, details of, you know, whether they've paid for break time and so forth. So I would really like robust outreach and education so that businesses feel like they, you know, around labor law, so that the details of it, so that they feel like they can comply easily. And those are all my comments.
Great, thank you. So, um, I will work to try to summarize what I hear and then confer with staff and, uh, integrate my comments in as well. So I think we're hearing, um, unanimous, um, support for questions one and two in terms of the, you know, general direction that staff is going and related to the, um, wage theft and responsible construction ordinances. I am hearing, um, an overwhelming, um, majority asking about how do we expand it? Um, and so, um, I think that what was covered was having staff explore the various suggestions that we heard, both via, um, in public comment, via email, and I'm sure council members also shared it today in their remarks, um, when this item comes back for final adoption. And I just wanted to echo those. Um, we also heard about, um, maybe broadening and, and being more inclusive in the categories of folks that would fall under both ordinances, in particular our, our day workers. And then, um, I also heard opportunities for, I would say, both city outreach and then outreach and education. I know that we're working with the Santa Clara County Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement on an, on education and outreach. And so perhaps it can also be an entry point for even more, um, uh, robust kind of efforts. Um, and then I heard, I did hear folks who were interested in a little bit more related to, um, permits. So perhaps holding off on the permits or getting a little bit more than just, um, an administrative fee or a fine. And so perhaps staff can come back, um, with more information on that. Um, let's see. And then, Ms. Ramburgh, am I missing anything?
Um, no, you've, you've done an excellent job of summarizing, incorporating both the comments of the council as well as the, the public and, um, and I, I think that, um, with regard to the building permit process, that's, that's really the, the one example of a more, um, uh, um, forceful, um, in, uh, enforcement mechanism, um, that, that could be remedied through bond or through payment of, um, of unpaid judgments. Um, we didn't really put many other, um, options out there, nor, nor are the advocates putting them out there. And so I think what we would more likely be doing is coming back with what that type of an ordinance would look like, um, in Mountain View and what kind of, of, of implications it has for our process and, and resource, um, implications. Um, and, and I think that's what's intended by what I've heard from, from colleagues is that it's, it's, it's still that we want to explore these things and better understand them. Um, but, but I, I don't know that we would in exploring come up with a lot of different or creative other, um, uh, forceful ways of enforcing. Um, and so that would be our focus in our, in our follow-up research.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that, um, council's looking for just more information and if there are other available options, what those options are, um, is, is what I did, um, hear. Um, and I think, um, the only other thing I would add is just like the partnership opportunities. So I know that staff capacity is something we talk about every meeting. Um, and I know, um, and, and Councilmember Hicks reminded me of this, you know, this, with the city of San Jose, they do our wages, um, minimum wage, um, uh, kind of enforcement. I, and I know that the county is looking at perhaps further kind of bolstering their Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement. I know right now it's pretty limited scope, but I know that they're thinking about creating their own kind of infrastructure. And I wonder as more cities within the county are adopting both wage theft and responsible construction ordinances, if there's a way for us to also work in tandem with the county on how they can kind of partner up with us and maybe the county can take on that role. And I'd love for those conversations to, um, start now. And hopefully we can put a bug in their ear to see if that's something that could be possible down the road for like the, the capacity issues. But that's the only other thing I would add. Um, colleagues, anything else that we want here to add here, I think? All right, all right. Well, I think we've captured any, everything then. Okay. Thanks, everyone. Okay, and then, um, we can move on to item number eight, which is our unfinished business. Item eight point one is the Shoreline Boulevard Interim Bus Lane and Utility Improvements Design Project, sixteen through fifty-eight and Phase One Construction, Project eighteen dash forty-three Various Actions. Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer Ed Arango will present the report. Public Works Director Don Cameron is also available for a question. All right, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Arango.
Great, thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, let me share my screen here for the presentation. Make sure you guys can see this. In one second. Okay. You should be seeing the presentation there. Can I get a thumbs up? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Arango, we're seeing the, the preview slide version.
Thank you. Let me try that again. All right, let's try that. Great, okay. Um, thank you again, um, again, Ed Arango, Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. And I will be presenting the Shoreline Boulevard Bus Lane Project Update. Next slide, okay. So staff has been working on this large-scale and complicated project for the past six years. And it has been a significant design effort, including working with Caltrans to obtain a permit and coordinating the right-of-way acquisition work. Listed here are some of the past council action items, including approval for removal and mitigation of the sixteen heritage trees. The Shoreline Bus Lane combines many elements into one project. As seen in this figure, the project will install signal modifications, irreversible bus lane, upgrades to the water and sewer lines, protected bike lanes, and a protected intersection at West Middlefield Road, including the additional second left-turn lanes at that location. This is an overview of the recommendations provided in the council report, and I'll be going over these five recommendations throughout the presentation. As previously mentioned, in 2019, council approved heritage removals to accommodate the project improvements. They include twelve heritage trees on North Shoreline Boulevard related to the, the protected bikeways and sidewalk improvements, and four heritage trees in the West Middlefield Road median related to the additional left-turn lanes seen by the green circles in this figure. During field reviews and preparation for the work by the contractor, eleven additional heritage trees were initially identified to be impacted. Ten of the trees are in the West Middlefield Road median, and due to the proximity of the excavation work to the tree's root structure, preserving those trees would not be feasible due to the root impacts and potential for instability and tree uproot. A similar scenario was found for one additional tree on North Shoreline Boulevard located behind the sidewalk area. On September eighth, staff presented the eleven trees to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, and the PRC voted to not recommend removal of these trees. In response to the PRC concerns and the community feedback we received, staff did a detailed review of the transportation impact analysis from the 2017 North Bay Shore Precise Plan Environmental Impact Report for those specific movements at this intersection. During this review, staff noted inconsistencies in the data and updated the data to account for the discrepancies. Although I won't be going into the details of the traffic analysis in this presentation, that information is outlined in the council report, and I can answer questions regarding the analysis at the conclusion of the presentation. With the updated data and reevaluating the design based on those changes, staff determined that the additional left-turn lanes could be reduced where seven of the ten additional trees previously identified in previously identified in the West Middlefield median would not be impacted and do not need removal. The three remaining trees, the smaller redwoods with the five to six inches diameter trunks, could be transplanted as recommended by the city arborist. This revised layout continues to include the removal of the four previously approved heritage trees in the Middlefield median from twenty nineteen. Three on the west side of the intersection and one on the east side. Recommendation number one, which is to approve the transplanting three heritage trees in the West Middlefield median, those smaller coastal redwood trees from the location you see here on the east side of the median to the west side of the median. This includes removal, removing the four previously approved heritage trees. These two figures provide a visual comparison of the landscape configurations. The top figure shows the existing trees in the West Middlefield median. And the lower figure is the configuration with the modifications done to the left turn lanes. And transplanting the three smaller redwood trees, again, to the west side of the median. Therefore, nearly all the tree coverage will generally remain or be restored. Additional renderings of the planned improvements with the proposed modifications are seen here showing the intersections in two different perspectives. The top figure is looking north towards Highway one oh one, showing the Shell gas station west uh in the top right-hand corner. And to the left is the west side of the median showing the transplanted tree growth five years after project completion. The bottom bottom right figure is standing at the corner of the Shell gas station looking south towards the east side of the median with the existing trees remaining immediately after project completion and the transplanted trees moved to the other side of the intersection. Here, the protected intersection improvements can be seen as those islands shown each of the corners, including the bicycle and pedestrian crossings. As noted in the council report, the second left turn lanes are expected to provide significant traffic relief and improve intersection operations with the planned growth in housing in the North Bay Shore, along with the planned growth CY that will increase trips at this intersection. The three replacements identified for the project include replacing the sixteen previously approved tree rules at a two-to-one ratio and the recommended tree on shoreline at a four-to-one ratio for a total replacement count of thirty-six trees. Council could consider an alternative replacement ratio of four-to-one for all the trees to provide a total replacement count of sixty-eight trees to increase canopy coverage. The planting locations for the trees would include the median on West Middlefield, where the land there are landscaping gaps, and also include coordination with Shoreline property owners to potentially install trees behind the sidewalks. These three figures show the possible planting sites with the West Middlefield median area shown in the highlighted areas. Top left figure is is east of shoreline near San Brown Park. The top right figure is just west of shoreline. And the bottom figure is further west of shoreline near San Pierre and Terabella Intersections. Staff listed an alternative in the council report to a recommendation number one related to removing the left turn lanes from the scope of work. For this alternative, the environmental documentation for the project would need to be revised with a council resolution adopting the revised SEQA document prior to formally removing the left turn lane scope from the project. This will necessitate engaging a SEQA consultant and may affect the project schedule. Additionally, revisions to the plans would be needed to reflect the adjustments to the intersection, including demolition, civil layout, striping, and traffic signal plants. There may be potential contractor claims for additional changes to the scope, delays, and material cost increases. Should in the future council elect to perform this as a standalone project, staff would expect a general cost rise and the economies of scale incorporating this work with the current work would be lost. Lastly, additional staff time will be needed will be needed to be devoted to the design changes and construction contract amendment or rebidding, which may affect other projects due to staff workload. If this alternative is selected, staff identified two scenarios showing potential paths forward for scope removal. In the first scenario, if staff is successful in negotiating favorable terms with the contractor, with a SEQA work review taking place in parallel, staff would return in to council in June of twenty twenty-two to restart the project. In scenario two, if we are not successful in negotiating terms, staff will return to council in early twenty twenty-two to recommend terminating the construction contract. The SEQA review would still be in process and staff would return in June of twenty twenty-two to request approval of the SEQA document and authorize repeating the project. In this case, con- construction would start approximately November of twenty twenty-two. Staff would expect potentially higher costs, construction costs due to cost rise. So moving over to North Shoreline Boulevard. Staff's second recommendation identifies the removal and mitigation of one additional heritage tree located behind the sidewalk on the east side of shoreline between Middlefield and Terabella, as shown in the top figure as tree number eleven. This removal is necessary to incorporate the new protected bikeway and sidewalk improvements, as seen in the bottom figure. The root system will be significantly impacted by the excavation work for these improvements and preservation of this tree would not be possible due to instability and potential uproot. Staff has recommended the mitigation of four-to-one ratio with twenty-four inch box trees for this tree. The last recommendations of three, four, and five are related to unforeseen conditions during construction. As part of the contractor's additional investigative pothole work associated with the water and sewer line work to confirm existing utilities, unforeseen conditions were encountered with the existing underground utilities that were not previously identified. Staff and the designer of the project coordinated the planned revisions needed to address these conflicts, and this work did take additional design effort effort by Mark Thomas. Council's authorization for recommendations three through five would transfer an appropriate funding to the project and authorize an amendment to the professional services agreement with Mark Thomas. Although no council action is needed regarding the groundwater treatment, staff is raising this additional unforeseen condition for informational purposes. The trenching activity for the sewer and water line work will require de-watering of the groundwater and was expected to be able to be directly discharged to the sewer system. But due to higher-than-allowed concentration of metals found during water sampling, a treatment system will be required involving a series of tanks and filtering. Staff is still coordinating this effort and the utility conflict changes, uh I'm sorry, and the utility conflict changes with the contractor to determine impacts to the project costs. Consistent with the council report, identified here are the five recommended a- actions for council's consideration. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so we'll start first uh with council questions. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Sorry. Yeah, um. One of the things that I didn't hear you talk about in your presentation that I remember reading about in the staff report was the PG&E. Um, uh air equipment that needed to be put in and and that there was a conflict with the trees associated with that too. Could you explain that to us?
Absolutely. Um, so there is an existing PG&E regulator station on the west side of the median. Um, it's in the median, it's located there. Um, it coincided um our work to ex- um to do the left turn lane work at the at that intersection coincided with PG&E's um need to upgrade that regulator station. So we were already looking at alternative locations for that regulator station because there it was insufficient space to keep the the upgraded regulator station in the median. And we were looking at San Veron Park. So we've been coordinating with the Community Services Department um and PG&E to find a location, and San Veron Park seemed to be a good location where there's sort of lord low use in an Ivy area um and not next to an active play area. So that's kind of the PG&E related work, so there's.
So did that conflict with any of the tree removal? Was my understanding that it did?
So um PG&E, a- again, it's the two projects coincided where we're already looking for a new home for the PG&E gas regulator station. If we hadn't, PG&E could go in at the existing location and um require that the removal of those three previously approved heritage trees on the west side of the median be removed with their PG&E gas safety project.
So those trees have to be, uh you're 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 suggesting that those trees have to be removed for multiple reasons?
Correct.
Yeah, Councilmember Shaw Walter, Don Cameron, Public Works Director. Um, that is correct. What we were pointing out in the staff report is that if the left turn lanes do not go in, um either those trees will still need to come down in order to upgrade the gas regulator or the gas regulator would still need to be moved to San Vernon Park, and that will also affect trees. So we wanted to make the council aware, uh one way or another, something does need to happen with that PG&E gas regulator.
Okay, I I I just wanted to make sure that I understood that, you know, there was sort of sadly a double whammy for those particular trees and um uh, okay, thank you so much for clarifying.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Maticek?
Thanks. So on attachment two, um on pages two and four, I noticed that a lot of um movements besides the left turn lanes going eastbound and westbound have queue lengths that exceed the capacity. And um I know we're only talking about the eastbound or westbound tonight, but um I've forgotten. Do we have mitigation measures to address the other movements or um this is just is what it is?
Can you be more specific on which movements you're referring to, Councilmember?
Sure, so like um probably the PM is um a better example on page four.
Okay.
Um, the queue length um at the fiftieth percentile and the ninety-fifth percentile, for example, um the, let's see, what's a good one? Southbound through, the last one in there, where the queue length at the fiftieth is eight hundred and fifty-one and nine hundred and ninety-two for at the ninety-fifth percentile.
So the through movement, if I'm if I'm understanding your question correctly, the through movement doesn't show a turn bay length because there's no turn bay for the through movement?
Well, yeah, so I'm wondering for these other movements, it looks like there's significant delays a- and long queues. Not necessarily um turns. And so I was wondering, do we have mitigation measures to address those queues? Or they really can't be mitigated? Or we're hoping that um with the transit lane, there the queues are reduced?
So we don't have mitigation measures for those movements? It was just focused on the left turn lane movements.
But as you note, um the ones that you're talking about here are Long Shoreline Boulevard and between the transit lanes, the protected bikeways. The goal would be to see if, you know, we can move more people out of their cars.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so I have a, I actually have a quick question. So one of the um things that's come up, and I think that this might have come up in a council question, but I I I glanced at it briefly, was um the traffic patterns in a post-COVID world. Um, could staff maybe speak to, it sounds like you know, there was, I think, six things listed in the staff report on on why this project is proposed and moving forward, but it could could staff maybe maybe talk about um, you know, uh that that element and and um why it may still be necessary to move forward even if um we're not seeing the same traffic we've seen prior.
Mr. Arango, do you want me to take that one?
I was just gonna um ask that you would.
Alrighty, thank you. As we know in the staff report, obviously, there's still a lot of unknowns in terms of what uh, you know, as conditions return post-COVID. But what we are already seeing and has been well documented is that uh traffic has been bouncing back. And on now major corridors, we're seeing it on El Camino Real, we're definitely seeing on the freeways. I'm hearing about eighty-five now being stop and go again during some of the commute periods. There, you know, we're s- and typically, this is not unusual when we've had recessions and other times that has caused traffic to uh pull back quite a bit. Is the first place we see major growth in traffic is on the ma- main corridors such as the freeways and and so on. And then it starts to kind of trickle in and start to affect uh more more of your street system. So it's already well documented that we're back to seventy, seventy-five percent traffic levels on a lot of these major corridors, and this is even before most of the employers have returned their staff to the offices. After that, alls we can do is kind of uh monitor and watch what might be changing trends. For instance, you know, we we're aware that on many office-based employment sites that they're talking about, different ways to incorporate remote work into their regular uh routine. But every things that we've read, things that we've talked to major employers about, is that they still plan to have their employees at the offices two or three times a week. Some of them may pick core days, in which case um they would try to have everybody in. Others, I know one major employer we have that is going to the hot office desk type arrangement, uh where, you know, you come in and you reserve the day before and you'll have a cubicle waiting for you. But this opens up opportunities for them to, for employers then to add more people to the same office building. So when I look at it from a transportation sp- perspective, what I see is the same number of daily trips to that office building, it's just spread out over more people on the assumption that people, um, you know, employers, property owners will not want to leave their spaces vacant and underutilized. They want to put them in the maximum use possible. The other piece that's driving this is that even with all of our work, working, for instance, in North Bay Shore to achieve a forty-five percent SOB rate, or even if we can get it down to thirty-five percent, even with what we're doing with the Eastwind Wisman Precise Plan, is we're still aware that every every development, every new housing project, as well as office, does generate new trips. So as we look at this, we're we're saying, you know, we're already seeing the traffic come back. People are going to return to the offices, just maybe in a different way. And we are planning on substantial housing growth in North Bay Shore, and not all of them are going to work in North Bay Shore, right? And we do have substantial amount of other growth throughout the city. And then Middlefield and Shoreline are arterials. And they were designed to carry the traffic and keep them off our neighborhood and other streets. So they tend to pull in the traffic. Um, so that's a key reason why we as staff are saying that we do expect that the traffic not only will return, but the growth that's projected will lead to the traffic impacts that led to the original mitigation measure to add these second left turn lights.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Right, does anybody else from council have any questions? All right, so seeing none, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We'll display a two-minute timer on the screen. All right, Bruce England.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not even sure where to start with this. I I really do object to this plan about the turn lanes and taking out trees at all. It's interesting that there was some X number of trees to be removed, and now that number is dropping to accommodate what PRC said and what the public has been saying on this. But fundamentally, I just think that we're at a pivot point, and we need to take seriously that climate change is happening. And we can't just do business as usual on these things. And and city council has a goal of improving biodiversity and addressing climate change. And this part of the project, I I realize it's a complex project, but just this part about putting in the turn lanes and taking out trees. I just don't think it's a good idea. I I feel that we need to stop accommodating vehicle travel as though making that easier is a good idea. I don't think it is. And the point has been raised about whether adding the left turn lanes will actually make traffic better on shoreline when the bottleneck is really on shoreline. Uh, and I also question whether employers are really going to be able to compel their employees to come back to work as they did before. Of what I've been reading is that employees are reevaluating their options. And they may be, traffic may be increasing now, but some number of those people might actually And they may be, traffic may be increasing now, but some number of those people might actually make decisions shortly. About the way that they'll work, the nature of their work, and they might actually start working from home. So even if you don't cancel this project. I think at least waiting would be prudent. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Jeans.
Thank you, I have slides again. Great. Yeah, Albert Jeans, again, I have sent in a much more detailed response to staff's report on why I don't think the redwood trees near the Shoreline-Middlefield intersection should be cut down. So now I just want to emphasize a couple of key points. Next slide, please, and this is in good compliment to Councilmember Maticek's comments. Just a second, okay. The first thing is that adding the extra turn lanes will not make much difference in the situation for which they were proposed. Staff used data for existing conditions plus project to justify the extra turn lanes. I believe this is unreal unrealistic because North Bayshore is unlikely to be built up anytime soon. The twenty thirty cumulative plus project conditions analyzed in the traffic impact analysis. With North Bayshore precise plan is our best guess as to what will happen, you know, not counting in COVID and all that. According to this analysis, Shoreline and Middlefield is just one of many intersections shown this map. That will be significantly and unavoidably impacted by a North Bayshore precise plan. Regardless of the mitigations, anything with red means dryers will have to wait multiple cycles, including intersection, but how will it bad will get? Next slide, please. This chart shows the queue lengths, again, which Senator Maticek referred to at the at this intersection. I specifically want you to look at the parts highlighted in red. Those are the queue lengths for all the movements at the fiftieth percentile. And you see all the ones except for one have theoretically infinite queue lengths, which means. That there's just too many cars and the queues are just going to grow continuously. So you can see there's practically no difference between mitigated and unmitigated. Left turn lanes are not going to solve this problem. I think we just better go to the next slide. Finally, yeah, I want to implore the the council members to save tree number eleven. Next slide, please. According to, yeah, staff's diagram, the sidewalk is the main reason it overlaps most of the roots. I think if you just raise the sidewalk a little bit. Have it right over the ground in the roots, you can save the tree and you'll give all the pedestrians and. Bicyclists a lot of needed shade as temperatures go up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right. Just going to wait for my timer to come back and then we'll move on to our next public speaker. Great, Rhody Bryant.
Yes, thank you. I currently serve in the PRC, but I'm speaking to you today as a long-term, long-time resident of Mountain View. You're looking at a modified proposal for adding left turn lanes at the intersection of Middlefield and Shoreline. I thank staff for listening to concern and very well-informed residents and to the opinion of the PRC. By reducing the length of the turn lanes, the city has saved numerous heritage trees and prevented further degradation of our environment. But even implementing the shortened left turn lanes will cost us the lives of four thriving heritage redwoods. Together with their canopy and the wildlife they shelter. These trees do not have to come to come out, even for PG&E, there is a possible solution, it's under all. Yes, you approved the project in twenty nineteen and of course staff wants to complete projects, but I say this to you, the world has changed since twenty nineteen. We live in a new world, we must not go back to business as usual. A decision you made two years ago to take out trees from the left turn lanes may not be the right one today. Taking out heritage trees to improve access to North Bayshore for hypothetical single occupier occupier cars makes no sense in our current world. Do we actually want to improve car access to North Bayshore rather than bike and bus access? Please stop or defer the left turn lanes. If the need arises, deal with it then. Do not cut down majestic trees that will not regrow to current size in our lifetimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Cox.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Honorable Mayor Kamai Vice Mayor Ramirez and city council members. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on item eight point one. I'm here to support Albert Jeans' position not to move or remove the large, beautiful redwood trees along Middlefield Road. And construct turn lanes from the Shoreline Boulevard interim bus lane. These large heritage trees are part of the exceptional historic legacy of our city and should be preserved. As Albert has pointed out, removing the trees to construct better turn lanes will not solve the traffic issues involved. In the IR of the North Bayshore precise plan. And with the pandemic still active, there is a lot of uncertainty when and whether the precise plan. As originally envisioned will be built out and whether the employees who were working at North Bayshore. Want to go back to working the way they were or substantially like the way they were before the pandemic. Just reference all these articles about the great resignation to understand. The importance that is being placed on employee decision about what will happen, not just employer decision. But one thing is certain, take the trees out, they're gone forever. Let's put this decision on hold and only. Bring it up again if future events show there's a strong and compelling reason to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Brown.
Hey, I'll, general case of traffic is interesting up here, not really. But my main issue along Shoreline as a resident of North Bayshore is the concert traffic. My wife and I have spent over two hours getting from Middlefield to Pear during a concert. And the reprieve we got from lockdown is sadly over now that the amphitheaters opened back up. Can we do something for the people who are just trying to get home to North Bayshore? Thanks.
Thank you, Sima.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this topic. So I am against removing the heritage trees on Middlefield and Shoreline. And I support Albert Jeans and some of the other residents that spoke about this topic. It's really disappointing that some of the current plans, like the, it's taking like the easiest way out. We are not thinking about. The environmental effects this is going to have, especially in California where we are seeing like. You know, more and more concrete coming up and, you know, the side effects, we see it every day. Also regarding the traffic, we really don't know how it's going to pan out once people start returning back to work, like most likely in a hybrid mode. Or many of them are going to be working remotely on a more long-term basis. So I really feel we should wait and watch until, you know, it changes back and see if we really need to implement this or not. Also, these trees, like they provide such good cover of which. A shade shaded area even on like a really hot day, like people can bike and walk around. And it's really pleasant in the street. So I really feel that we should. Be more responsible and think of alternative solutions and not just take the easy, easy way out and just chop down these trees that have been there for decades and it's. Not not possible to replace them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Daniel Holsey.
Hello, so I have two cents to provide as a cyclist on. The turn lanes and that's merely that every time there's a turn lane, it usually goes over the bike lane. And is a encroachment on my right of way as a cyclist. And so. I think the cyclist safety aspect should be considered in the. Placement of the turn lanes, if that's your plan.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands, so I will bring this back to council. For deliberation. And action and note, yeah. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to. Thank also the members of the public who brought this to our attention. I think. It's unfortunate that the original design included as many tree removals as it did, and I think it really was. Thanks to the due diligence of our residents for identifying some of the deficiencies in the original plan. And the members of the PRC as well for calling attention to it. And as a consequence, I think we've seen staff's good work in responding to those concerns and. Mitigating them, I think, as as best as they're able to. So so my gratitude to the members of the public and to staff for for their response. I had an opportunity to sit down with with Mr. Jeans and. He gave a very compelling presentation. I agreed with him, he persuaded me. And I felt, that was a few months ago, you know, it it was very difficult. To to justify this component of a much bigger, more complex and important project. This particular component was hard to justify based on, I thought, a lot of the compelling information that he provided. Now I've had the benefit of the staff's redesign and the analysis and the report. And I think an appreciation for some of the very difficult trade-offs that were presented with tonight. And based on the information that we've received. I've come to support the staff recommendation. So that's my preamble. I think there were a number of things in the staff report that. Are important for us to to acknowledge, including the. It may be that there is a location for the PG&E gas regulator that will result in no tree removals. But that wasn't an option that was provided to us. And I don't want to be too speculative. That's, it's unfortunate that really there aren't good options there, that regardless of the location, at least based on the information we've been given. Some trees will be removed. I'm also very sympathetic with Bruce England's perspective about. Sort of continuing with the the legacy of mitigating LOS impacts identified through CEQA. You know, if we were operating with the current regulatory framework and I mitigating VMT impacts. We may not have had to include this particular mitigation. And I think that that's a non-trivial thing for us to acknowledge. But this is the mitigation that was identified from that EIR. Revising the EIR is difficult work. And I'm also concerned about the possibility that it could delay or disrupt the broader, again, overriding project. The the bus lane project, which includes not just the bus lane, but also the bicycle pedestrian improvements and all of the utility improvements that are really. Essential, I think, for implementing the North Bayshore precise plan. And so I'm I'm very concerned about the possibility of having, for instance, in a worst-case scenario that that staff had laid out, that we'd have to rebid that project. And as we saw with the the public safety building, construction costs only go up. And that money that, you know, could have gone to something else may may now have to go to. Implementing, you know, the same project that we had approved approved a few years ago. If there are other ways of making this better, I'm open to them. But just to sort of help move things along, I'll I'll go ahead and move the staff recommendation.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. So we have a motion for the staff recommendation from the Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hicks. And I just, sorry, Councilmember Hicks, before I go to you, I just want to say I see two hands in the attendee box. I just want to unfortunately say that public comment is over for this item. We're already into council deliberation. So just wanted to say that for those who have their hands raised. Go ahead, Councilmember Hicks.
Well, I did not raise my hand to second the motion. I raised it before I knew a motion was going to be made. So. I, and I would not be supporting the motion as is. So technically, do you want my comments? Or it's not, it's not a modification. So do you want my comments or wait for a second?
Do you have a substitute motion?
No, well, I could make a substitute motion. Sure, should I do that?
We would need a second on this.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that we would need a second first.
I'll second the Vice Mayor's motion. Councilmember Hicks, do you want to?
Just make a comment? Sure.
Well, no, so I seconded the Vice Mayor's motion, just for the purposes of it, just in case you want to make a substitute. I don't see any other hand.
Oh, now I make a substitute, okay.
Yeah, if you want, yes. I don't see the other hand on the cue, so I just wanted to keep the conversation.
Thank you, now I understand. Okay, so I would actually be making a substitute motion. To defer the issue and the reason is, I really want to first thank staff and the public for. Staff for for all the work they put into this in response to the the. Comments from the public, but the 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 some, the reason I would make a motion to defer is that. What I'm seeing, the the, all of this, the project as is, is. Was designed before COVID and due to remote work, we've really, we really have additional tools. To arrange how people get in and out of the of the area. And I think that. I would like to defer so that, I don't want to wait to hear how the businesses there decide to get people in and out. And I don't want to design for a sort of a worst-case scenario in terms of SOVs. I'm, I want to interact with them and get them to use the tools, the tool of remote work and. Arrange that in a way that would lower carbon emissions frankly. And lower the the amount of cars going in and out on any given day. I think, you know, from what I've seen. Over the past year, the the ramifications of climate change are horrendous and ever more apparent. And I think we have to take active steps and not just, not just go along business as usual. And I I feel like I see members of the public supporting various aspects of that. So I would defer and want to make a more active role in kind of changing the way commute happens with these new remote work tools. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we have a substitute substitute motion to defer by Councilmember Hicks. Councilmember Libra, we actually have Councilmember Avikoga who pinged me, who would who would like to speak. She pinged me prior to your raising of the hand. She's having some technical difficulties. Is that okay? Okay, Councilmember Avikoga, if you can hear us, please unmute.
Hello, can you read?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. I'm having some challenges, technical challenges today, but. I wanted to second Councilmember Hicks' motion to defer. I, you know, very much really appreciate, number one, the PRC and the public for coming forward. And bringing up, raising the issue of the trees. And then I also want to thank staff for going back and taking a look at the project and coming up with a way to save more trees. So, yeah, I I really very much appreciate that, but, you know, as as some of the members of the public have said. You know, life has changed a lot since twenty fifteen, I believe, when we approved the precise plan and the. EIR with overriding considerations and and frankly, even at that time, I had a bit of consternation. In approving the EIR with overriding considerations because I remembered. We did, we were still going to see, I believe it was eighty-five intersections between East Palo Alto and Santa Clara. At LOS, E or F levels. And so. This was a challenge to start with. I'm landing on is how things have changed and. I'm about to go into a two-day workshop tomorrow at MTC. Where we're going to be discussing how to bring transit back, but a part of that is there will be a presentation by the business community. I got a preview. how, and how they are saying that, you know, it's not going to go back to the way it was in 2019. Most of their employees don't want to come back to work full-time every day. They maybe will come back to the three days. And then for some of my other regional boards I sit on, we're actually, and I know our city too, we're experiencing challenges with hiring people. And with this, one particular regional board where we're trying to hire folks right now, I've been told that, you know, we're offering work from home and maybe coming in five days a month. And some candidates, applicants, don't want to come in at all. And so I think my, you know, we just don't know. And, you know, and I guess that's okay. There's nothing we can do about that. But it has compelled me to say, you know, let's, let's just wait a while and see how things come back. And I think this would be different if it was to encourage more transit or bike ped improvements to encourage alternative modes of transportation. But it's really hard for me to say, let's do this, you know, take out some trees, to put in a second left turn lane, when we really don't know what traffic patterns are going to look like in five to 10, five years or 10 years. And it all, in all, you know, realistically, even though the precise plan was for 2030, we're at 2020, end of 2021. And, you know, the likelihood of everything being built out in the precise plan by 2030, I think is a really far stretch, especially when Google is asking for a 20-year development agreement. So I asked staff during my briefing, you know, how much would it cost to do, to delay it? If we had to do it as a standalone project in a few years? Of course, it's hard to put a price tag now, but, you know, they gave me a ballpark figure. And it's minimal in terms of transportation projects. So I think we can afford to, and we can, we can afford to defer for, at least for a while. So that's why I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Cameron.
Mayor, thank you. Appreciate it. Staff is going to need clarity on what the actual motion is to say defer. As you will recall, there are actually five recommendations before council. And one thing you may want to consider is taking the recommendations separately. If the intent is to defer the whole project, I have to remind council that we have an active construction project out there. And we, you know, there's a lot of cost to the city, delayed claims, other issues to just defer. And we would need clearer direction to say that you want to terminate the whole project and then we have to follow through on what that means in terms of all the other work that was done, the right of way, and so on. That's different. However, if what's, what the substitute motion is about, the first recommendation, which is about the left turn lanes, as staff noted, really the, the alternatives would be to direct staff to start the process, to change the CEQA document. And as part of that, and in parallel with that, we would start negotiating with the construction contractor to see if there's favorable terms for removing that element. And if it's not favorable to the city at that point, consider what's in the best interest of the city in terms of potentially terminating the construction contract and rebidding it. As Mr. Arango presented, there's two paths forward there. Once, you know, we hear of council's direction related to recommendation number one, which deals with the trees and the left turn lanes, then we ask you to give staff the ability then to pursue those discussions with the contractor as well as move forward on the CEQA work, which then protects council when it's time to make a formal decision about the left turn lanes. So we do need clarity on the intent of the motion.
So I've been talking about the trees and the left turn lane, but I don't know what council member, since I was unclear, maybe Councilmember Abi Koga was, was seconding something different than that. So I would like to, and it sounds like she explored it with staff, so I would like to hear from her as well.
Oh, yes, Mayor, if I could chime in, yes, I was also referring to the left turn lane project.
So thanks, thanks, Councilmember Abi Koga. So Councilmember Hicks, you need to clarify your motion. So given what Ms. Cameron said, is yours only in relation to item one, which is part of the defer item one? And then what about items, I believe, two through five?
So I'm going to have to, I believe it's, I don't, I don't have them all up in front of me and I'm going to have to put them up in front of me now. But I believe it's item one. Let me look at it to confirm. I'm working with one screen here. Sorry.
Okay. And then Mr. Arango, maybe you can bring up the, like, I think you had a couple alternates. So perhaps you can bring up that slide for Councilmember Hicks. Please. Thank you. Sorry.
Here, just give me a minute.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Hicks, Mr. Arango is going to bring up the alternate slide, which I believe includes the language which Ms. Cameron was mentioning.
Okay, great. Great. Sorry. Sorry, one screen, one screen's out. Lots of technical difficulties here.
Councilmember Shaw Walter, once I get clarity on the motion, I'll come to you. Okay?
Wow, Mr. Arango's bringing that up. I'll read what it says in the council report about the alternative motion or the alternative to recommendation number one. Direct staff to proceed with CEQA review for removal of the additional left turn lane scope of work on West Middlefield Road, which will include preparing a revision to the North Bay Shore Precise Plan EIR, adoption of which would precede amending or rebidding the construction contract. Which I don't think we actually put that in a slide.
That's correct. We didn't put that actually in the slide, but this was the, this slide that spoke to it. Don't know if that's helpful or not.
And I'll just note for council's consideration that going through the process of removing this as a mitigation measure from the North Bay Shore Precise Plan does not preclude council in the future deciding to put in the left turn lanes. That can all, you know, so, so suggesting just to defer, we do need clearer direction. And what, in our consultation with an environmental consultant and city attorney's office, before we have, we bring back to council an amended construction contract to take out the left turn lanes or a new contract to rebid it, we would need to amend the CEQA document and ensure that the CEQA clearance has been appropriately covered.
Great. Thank you. Trying to get clarity on the motion right now, Ms. Cameron.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm having trouble moving from screen to screen, but if you can still hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. So it's the alternative one, which is direct staff to proceed with CEQA review for, now, with, so it's deferring the left turn lane and preparing a revision to the EIR is what is, is the alternative that, that's what you're asking for along with the deferral, I think. Do I have it, do I understand you correctly?
That's what we're suggesting would be the alternative recommendation to recommendation number one.
Right. So now that, now that I'm able to get it on screen and read it, yes.
Sure. So just to clear, so to clarify, I think rather than just saying deferral, what Ms. Cameron is saying is to move forward with alternative to recommendation one, which is listed on page 23 of the staff report. And then we're also seeking clarity on your position for items two through five?
So I was, sorry, I have to scroll back and forth between them.
So right now, your motion only includes something related to the, to one recommendation, but staff has five.
Right. So one heritage tree on North Shoreline. So I think the rest can stay the same.
Mayor, may?
Yes, ma'am.
So for the recommendations that are before council, the ones that are related to the tree removal, and please, Ms. Cameron, chime in if there's more to this. But recommendation one in the staff report is about the trees. Two is also about the trees. Is where we would be asking council to then take a separate motion. That is about the utilities project and the move, the movement of the funding from the wastewater fund to those other funds. Four and five are also related to the trees.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, City Manager. Number one is related to the left turn lanes. And one possibility is you may want to consider taking action just related to recommendation number one. And it can be a separate motion to deal with the other recommendations if that's easier. Number two is a tree also on North Shoreline Boulevard, but it's related to protected bikeway. And if that tree, if you, if council does not approve removing that tree, it will necessitate us going back and seeing if the protected bikeway is feasible at that point. Because we, we can't, we can't just, in a small portion, eliminate the protected bikeway to get around that tree. And of course, we can't eliminate the sidewalk. So, and then three through five are all related to the utility projects. The funding that we need for the redesign that's already happened and, and just finishing that up. And that's related to the utility project.
So my motion is to, yeah, we can split them up. My motion is to defer number one, approving the transplanting three heritage trees. So the left turn lane in, as stated in, on page, page 23, where direct staff to proceed with CEQA review for removal of the additional left turn lane scope of work, which will include preparing a revision to the EIR, adoption of which would precede amending or rebidding the construction contract.
And we, before we move forward, I'm sorry, Mr. Arango, can we take off the shared screen? I'm having difficulty seeing everyone as we're making our way through this process. Okay. Mr. Chopra, I will go to you.
Just offering this as a suggestion. If the intent of the motion maker, Councilmember Hicks, is just to defer on item number one and adopt the alternate as presented in that slide and described by Public Works staff, the motion could be to do just that and then approve item, the staff recommendation for items two through five, if that's the motion maker's pleasure. And then, and we should, if it is, then get consensus from the secondary Councilmember Abi Koga. And then that could be, that could be a motion that's voted on.
Thanks.
So, yeah, I think, so thank you, Mr. Chopra. That's the clarity that I was seeking as well. So I did get a message from Councilmember Abi Koga that she's comfortable moving forward with that, which would be to defer and adopt the alternate to number one and that she would be supportive of the staff recommendations two through five. Councilmember Hicks, would you like to include that as your motion?
Yes. Yes, I would.
Okay. So for clarity purposes, the substitute motion, so the substitute motion by Vice, or by Councilmember Hicks, seconded by Councilmember Abi Koga, is to defer staff recommendation number one and instead adopt the alternate to staff recommendation number one, which would be, I'm just going to read it for folks, which would be direct staff to proceed with CEQA review for removal of additional left turn lanes, scope of work on West Middlefield Road, which should include preparing a revision to the North Bay Shore Precise Plan EIR, adoption of which would precede amending or rebidding the construction contract. And then, but moving forward with staff recommendations two through five. All right. Thank you. We have clarity on the substitute motion. Councilmember Shaw Walter, thank you for your patience.
Okay, I might make it a little muddier. First of all, I have a question. What does this do with the construction of the rest of the reversible bus lane project? And the protected, you know, the, can you tell us that, Public Works Director Cameron?
I'll start. Mr. Arango may want to add something more in.
Particularly with respect to the schedule. Yeah.
Well, one of the things that we'll have, we'll have to do is get the intersection redesigned to have just the single left turn lanes that are there. And so we designed a protected intersection, so we'll have to work with the design consultant to get that started, which can, again, be done in parallel as us bringing on a, an environmental consultant to proceed through the CEQA. However, one of the things that we will need to first do is start negotiations with the construction contractor about what it would mean to remove this element from the project, as well as address some of the utility rescoping, you know, redesign that we've done. And so we, we will need to delay doing anything more on this project while we have those negotiations and discussions with the, with the contractor so that we can determine if we need to terminate the contract and rebid it or if we can come to favorable terms for the city that we would be backed for your consideration in an amended construction contract. So there was some work that we were about ready to, for them to get started on, but we would ask them to just pause for now. It will add a delay.
So we'd add a year?
It depends. The, Mr. Arango put up the two scenarios. If we have a favorable negotiation, we're, we're talking upwards of eight months or so, because we come back to you in June with the amended construction contract, which kind of gives the thumbs up, go ahead, move forward now. The, but if it turns out, we recommend terminating the construction contract, we're looking at, it could be next November before we could start work again. Now staff would make every, you know, if it's looking favorable with the construction contractor and there is some pre-work we could let them do under the existing contract, we wouldn't know that maybe to February or March. We would try to find a way to keep the project moving. But we just want council to be aware that it may be in the city's best interest to, well, we definitely need to pause for the next two or three months so we can try to work this out with the construction contractor and get the intersection redesigned.
Okay. Well, I would request a, I would really like to think about the idea of a, a change to your motion, Councilmember Hicks, of deferring the development of the left turn lane for five years, which would allow us to analyze whether or not the traffic problems arise and to go forward with the rest and not, and to still keep this as a mitigation in our EIR so that we would not have to redo the EIR work. Are you interested in considering that?
I would consider that, yes.
Uh, I would consider that, yes.
Okay, I'd like to put that forward as a friendly amendment.
So to, so to clarify, it would be to...
Direct staff to defer the left turn construction for five years.
Rather than
Rather than the alternative that's listed.
Rather than the sequel review and then North Bayshire Precise Plan EIR amendment. Okay, okay, so the motion is now defer five years and staff recommendations two through five. All right. Right, Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
You're fine with that? Okay. All right, and um, Councilmember Abi Koga, is that okay with you?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, everyone.
Yes, I just want to give um, Director Cameron the opportunity to comment on that i- if, uh, from a public works perspective. Uh, if, if she understands that and has any comments on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, City Attorney. Uh, so what, what we would need to do as staff is go ahead and consult with an environmental attorney to confirm that we could proceed without adjusting the amending or revising the SEQA document. Because the project itself was cleared via SEQA as an amendment to the North Bayshire Precise Plan. And so we would have to confirm by removing this scope from the project, do we still need some kind of SEQA action related to the project? Um, we're, we will need to consult with, as I said, more of a SEQA uh, legal expert on that, just to confirm. Uh, our understanding then though is if that's possible, what you're also directing staff to do is do move forward with negotiating with the construction contractor to remove this element of work from the project. And, and it's back to then staffs using our judgment of whether we can successfully amend the construction contract or we need to recommend rebidding. But we won't know that until after we engage in discussions.
And I have one additional question, and that's that. With the PG&E issue, this tree, these trees that we are trying to save will be saved. I mean, what, what would that do to the PG&E um, issue, part of this?
What we, what staff recommended in the council report was that if council chose not to proceed with the left turn lanes, uh, we understand from PG&E that they are neutral about whether the regulator stays in the median, in which case they will have to, as mentioned, uh, replace it and take down those three trees. Or if they would move the regulator to San Vernon Park.
Okay.
And so if that's the case, we had suggested that since this is truly a policy question, we could start with the PRC and let them weigh the two different tree impacts for a uh, a potential recommendation to City Council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other clarification that you wanted to make, Ms., Ms. Cameron, or is that?
Not at, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, great. So is there clarity then in the, in the friendly amendment to the motion? I just, I'm trying to keep track. So the motion as it stands is, is the same, it's the defer for five years? Okay, with the staff recommendation two through five. All right. Okay, Councilmember Madashek.
Thanks. Um, I certainly appreciate um, residents bringing this to our attention and the PRC for weighing in on this. Um, I must say that to me, it seemed like prior to the most recent uh, addition to the motion, a deferral seemed the same as removing this project from a staff action perspective.
Is that, is that true?
It, it, from a staff action perspective, that is correct. It is this, it's gonna be the same steps that we have to take related to the potential path forward for the current construction project. Uh, what's being recommended uh, in terms of the deferral and the concept of saying five years is um, we would then look to add this project to the CIP in order to show intent to do the mitigation project, because that's, that's important also, is to show intent. And as is being said, that a future decision could be made uh, about that intent. Uh, but again, staff is saying that um, we would proceed under the lines of this motion if it's passed by council, but we may return to you if we're advised by the, you know, SEQA attorney that we still need to go through a SEQA uh, revision process.
Yeah, great. So I definitely appreciate the uh, addition of the timeframe, five years. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a, a substit-, we have a substitute motion with a second. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things. First, um, so I, I won't be supporting the, the motion, um, but I would recommend that um, the maker of the motion exclude recommendation three, which requires five votes in the event that there's a split vote. Um, so that way we can, because I, I'm guessing that there's uh, probably unanimous support for recommendation three related to the appropriation from the wastewater fund. Um, and I don't, I don't want to complicate things by having majority support for the other recommendations, but not quite the five votes, just the theory for the appropriation. So uh, that would be my um, suggestion just from a procedural element. But um, I think the extent is compelling to anybody. Um, if we're wrong, then there are significant impacts that we ought to be aware, uh, that we ought to really appreciate, potential cost overruns. If we're wrong about the traffic projections, then we're pushing out the construction impacts to when shoreline would be more heavily utilized, uh, which could create, you know, impacts and delays there. Uh, and, you know, the, the quality of life impacts of having to deal with construction during heavier utilization. Um, and then, you know, we may end up having to build these anyway, just at greater cost. And that's a standalone project. Um, I feel the prudent thing is to support the staff recommendation. I understand um, where um, other members of the council are coming from on this, but I just wanted to share why I remain more comfortable with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Sure, I'm, I'm willing to remove-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hicks, uh, City Attorney Chopra had his hand up. Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say that that is a, actually a good idea of what Councilmember Ramirez had, and I was gonna mention something similar to that. So the motion could be uh, modified to uh, just, just refer to items two, four, and five. And then immediately after taking the vote on, on the present motion with the revision to exclude item three, then immediately after that vote is taken, uh, another motion and a second by any council member, just on item three would be in order.
So yes, I think that's a good idea, and I would do that. So it's a direct staff to defer the left turn for five years and uh, go with the staff recommendations for two, four, and five excluding number three.
And I would second that.
Okay. So to clarify the motion, City Attorney Chopra, can you just say that the multiple votes we'll be taking? So we'll be voting on?
Sure, the, the motion has been changed now to defer item one for five years and uh, incorporating the other comments that uh, council, uh, excuse me, Director Cameron said there's a potential for a return regarding SEQA analysis. Uh, that doesn't need to be part of the motion, but just understood by council members. And then the motion would also include uh, approval of the staff recommendation for items two, four, and five. And the second or uh, Councilmember Abi Koga has approved that. I recommend taking a roll call vote on that motion. And then immediately after that, any council member can make a motion, and any other council member can second a motion for item three, and then a vote taken on that, that item.
So the, it sounds like we're to be gonna be taking two motions. The first motion would be the deferral for five years. Public Works, Public Works Director Cameron would come back with SEQA information, is that right? And then it would also be for the staff recommendation for two, four, and five.
Correct.
That would be the first motion.
Correct.
And then we would need a motion maker and a second or to put forward item number three.
Correct.
Okay. Not complicated at all. Thank you. Good, thanks. All right, so um, I don't, I, I think I'm just gonna call the question. Um, but before we take the vote, um, I just wanted to clarify my, my position as well as the Vice Mayor did. Um, so this item, as it's come increasingly kind of, the time has come for it to come back to council, has been one that's been really difficult um, for me as somebody who lives, lived in that area for over six years. Um, because I feel like it's a multi-layered project. It's not just about um, you know, making improvements for the North Bayshire Precise Plan. It's not just about um, making way for our PG&E utilities. It's not just about um, bike and pet infrastructure. Um, it, you know, it includes heritage trees. And it's been really, I think, difficult in terms of somebody who's a, who was a user of that for so long to think about what, what's the best. Um, and I really think that staff has tried very hard to find a path forward. Um, you know, part of me wonders if more time would lead to a design in which we could save even more trees as they've, they've come back and um, been able to do that um, tonight. But um, I feel concerned that if we do not move forward with the project, we will be faced with the difficulties that we saw two weeks ago in terms of the cost of construction only increasing. Um, and that, you know, as was mentioned, we have very very aggressive single occupancy vehicle targets. We have offices that are not at full capacity, but already reaching that seventy to seventy-five percent. Um, and we have very aggressive regional housing need assessment numbers um, that I feel are gonna need quite a bit of infrastructure. So um, for all of those reasons, I was supportive of the, the staff recommendation. So I won't be voting for the motion um, tonight. All right, so let's call the question. Uh, City Clerk Blazer.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Abi Koga?
Aye.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
Councilmember Madashek?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
For all the arguments that I've heard, this is really a hard one for me, but I, I'm going to vote, um, yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
No.
Mayor Kamai?
No.
Motion carries? Four, three.
Okay. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move the remaining item uh, regarding the wastewater fund appropriation.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Lieber, thank you. I got you. All right, so, and we have a motion for our remaining item three by Vice Mayor Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Lieber, and we'll just do a roll call vote on that one.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
Councilmember Abi Koga?
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Madashek?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
And Mayor Kamai?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, all right. Thank you, and thank you to staff. All right, we will move on to item number three, which is our new business. We'll move on to item nine point one, which is compensation for council appointees. Vice Mayor Ramirez will present the item. Vice Mayor Ramirez, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't have any slides, but I do have a brief report. Uh, each year, the city council reviews the performance and compensation of the council appointees. The council appointees include the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. By policy, the Vice Mayor oversees the process. The council has completed the evaluations, and the purpose of this item is to consider adjustments to compensation. Brown Act requires the council, council to orally report a summary of council action on the salaries, salary schedule, or fringe benefits of council appointees in an open meeting during which the final action is to be taken. To satisfy this requirement, I am providing this report. The city council recommends a five percent merit increase for the city manager. Additional compensation was not considered at this time for the city clerk due to her start date with the city in the last quarter of the fiscal year under review. In addition, prior to the annual performance evaluation meetings, City Attorney Christian Chopra announced he will be retiring in December twenty twenty-one. Due to his upcoming retirement, the city attorney did not participate in this evaluation process. Uh, the only other thing I'll add is that uh, though the, the Vice Mayor oversees the process, uh, I received uh, a lot of support from Sue Rush and her team, and just want to extend my appreciation for uh, her support during the, during the process. Uh, that ends my report. Uh, I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. Does any member of council have any questions? All right, not seeing any. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone, and we'll display a two-minute timer. All right, I am not seeing any hands, so I will bring the item back for council deliberation and action. And note that a motion to approve the item should include reading the title of the resolution attached to the report. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and do it. Uh, adopt, uh, also I'm, uh, uh, moved to approve the recommendation, including adopt a resolution of the city, council of the city of Mountain View, uh, approving annual compensation increase for the city manager and adopting a revised salary plan. I also neglected to say in the introduction that I also received support from Assistant City Manager Audrey Ramberg. Uh, and I want to extend my thanks also to all of you for participating in the performance evaluation process.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Enthusiastic second.
Great, so we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Shaw Walter, and we'll just do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
Councilmember Abi Koga? Oh, it's like she dropped off. Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
Councilmember Madashek?
Yes.
And Mayor Kamai?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. All right, so this moves us on to item ten, which is our council staff and committee reports. Does any member of the council have a, a staff or a committee report that they'd like to share? Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes, um, there are several things I want to share with you. Um, I, uh, I attended a recycling committee meeting um, yesterday, and there were some really great slides, so I'm going to prepare a um, one of those council-initiated um, agenda items, hopefully for next time, so I can spend a little more time and share the information that I got. I also um, attended the drought summit that the, that Valley Water held on um, on Saturday. Uh, Ellen is shaking her head, she was probably there too. And it, it's um, you know, even though we had quite a bit of rain um, on uh, Sunday, I know I measured two point nine inches in my uh, in my rain gauge, and that's really something. I mean, last year, all we got in the whole season was six inches. And um, we've been uh, so, you know, so almost three inches in a single storm is, is, is very good. Normally, we get about-
Normally, we get about, um, uh, twelve to fifteen inches a year. So that's, that's a healthy, healthy part of it. Hopefully, it'll keep on. Anyway, um, I wanted to, to share the message that, um, I, I, I heard, um, from one of the other council members who was taking part that I really thought was, was, um, interesting. And that's that everyone is a water manager and everyone is a water messenger. And the idea about that is that it's, it's all of our jobs to figure out how we manage our own water supply at home. You know, um, particularly with respect to reducing our outdoor water use because that's the, you know, that's the most. And, um, and the other thing is we were all, we are all water messengers. You know, we should be encouraging our friends and neighbors and families to save water. Um, so I, I wanted to share that because I've heard lots of messages over the years. As you can imagine, working as a water engineer, but that was the first one. I'd heard that one, and I, I liked it. Um, then I want to thank the staff and, um, the neighborhood's, uh, council committee for, uh, another successful neighborhood. This was the Phyllis, um, Grant Road, uh, Questa neighborhood. And, um, as Michaela, uh, Tillman Tinter stepped up for the first time to run this meeting since she's joined our staff, and she did a great job. And there were, um, as there always are, there were, um, staff there from all of the departments at answering uh, our community members' questions, and that was really good. And that most of the questions this time were related to traffic. So, um, Lorenzo Lopez answered the most questions. And so thank you. I just wanted to thank you about that.
Great, thank you. Any other council members have any updates? All right, I'll share mine. Um, I, uh, attended the Cities Association, um, meeting, Board of Directors meeting um, on October fourteenth, uh, where they were, they presented their diversity, equity, and inclusion, um, action plan to, um, the entire board. And then on the nineteenth, we had our, uh, Council Youth Services Committee where we, um, received the work plan for our youth advisory committee. And we also heard an update about the, um, upcoming, um, let's see, the upcoming teen wellness retreat. It's gonna be on Saturday, November thirteenth from ten AM to four PM at the Mountain View Senior Center. Um, this event's open to ninth through twelfth grade students, and it's gonna feature a variety of wellness workshops, self-care activities, and guest speakers on the topic of mental health and leadership. And the goals for, of this event is to provide teens with new and fun tools to navigate, um, court the crossroads of spirit, mind, body, and empowering them to thrive in their everyday life. I think one of the most exciting things was hearing from our YAC chair and, uh, vice chair about how the events that they've been having virtually and how much of a difference it's made for them this year, um, particularly navigating the pandemic and then coming back to school. Um, and how they, they were really grateful that, uh, council prioritized this as a council goal, and they're looking at maybe doing some of these events as like annual events and, um, continuing them as part of their work plan. So it's really, really exciting, um, to hear how seen they feel um, and how much they want to kind of continue this. So, just want to thank my colleagues for being supportive of that council goal and that item and to, to know that it's really making a difference for our youth. So, um, that is my update for, um, item ten. So we'll move on to item eleven, which are closed session report. City Attorney Chopra, do you have a closed session report?
There's no closed session report tonight, Mayor.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item twelve, which is our adjournment. Thanks so much for joining us, everyone. And our next city council, regular city council meeting will be on November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Until then, stay healthy, and our meeting is adjourned at nine thirteen PM. Thanks, everyone.